...organizational meeting of the Fairfield Public Schools for 7:00 PM. Present is Mrs. Eileen Lou McCormick, Mr. Mark Patton. We expect Ms. Donna Carnell, Mrs. Jessica Gerber, myself, Philip Dwyer, Mr. Anthony Calabrese, Ms. Tricia Pitco, Mrs. Jennifer Maxon Connolly, and Mr. John Llewellyn. If I can have you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As is our custom, we elect a temporary Chair and Secretary, and so the recommended motion is that in accordance with the bylaws, interim Superintendent Dr. Stephen Tracy will serve as temporary Chairman/Secretary during the election of Board Officers. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Maxon Connolly, so the meeting is yours.
[inaudible]
Oh, yeah, all in favor? Shall we, we're about to vote for the election of Dr. Tracy for the temporary Chair of the organizational meeting.
Sorry, I'm late.
I'm holding the vote open for you. Okay.
All right.
It's unanimous.
It's a sweep. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's proceed.
For the, is there any nomination for the position of Chair? Mr. Calabrese?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Dwyer for the Chair.
Is there a second to the nomination for Mr. Dwyer? Ms. Gerber? Are there further nominations? Seeing none, can we have a motion to close the nominations? Ms. Maxon Connolly, seconded by Ms. Pitco. All in favor, please raise your hands to close the nominations. Opposed? Seeing none, and now, I'm sorry, are you?
Opposed.
Opposed, I'm sorry, let me write that.
Can I explain why rather than just it to?
Sure. This is on the motion to close nominations.
Are you still down there? Yes.
Did you want to say something, Ms. Carnell?
Obviously, I have to wait my turn, so.
No, this is?
Ms. Gerber told me how to wait, so.
No, I didn't, I thought you.
Oh, okay.
We're, we're on the motion to close nominations, and if you want to speak to it, sure.
I guess the reason that I was opposed to closing it is that I'm entering my fourth year of being on the Board, and I just feel that there's been no change in the Chairman in being the fourth year, and I think it's, would be nice to work with other people in other roles. And I'm not, I'm going to put it out, I don't know why the Board doesn't feel that way either, that it's no disrespect to Dr. and Mr. Dwyer, it's, it's nice to see other people. I think we even voted in a new President.
And I'm just reminding myself, I violated Robert's rules by allowing debate on a motion to close discussion, but out of courtesy. Can we then just retake the motion to close nominations? All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and opposed? One, and not voting?
No, I'll, I'll oppose.
Opposed. So, seven in favor, two opposed, the motion carries, and now on the? Just for correction, the minutes do have to reflect who voted yes and no. Okay, you have it? Okay, great. And then, now on the, on the main motion, that Mr. Dwyer be elected as Chair of the Board, all in favor? Ms. Connolly, Ms. Pitco, Mr. Calabrese, Mr. Dwyer, Ms. Gerber, and Mr. Patton, opposed? Ms. Carnell, Ms. Lou McCormick, Mr. Llewellyn. And I think that's everybody. Everyone voted one way or the other. Okay.
So, I'd like to start a discussion to the Board, I'd be curious, Anthony, I, Ms. Calabrese, if you respect, not shake your head, I'd like to just understand why the Board feels it's necessary for the fourth year in a row to nominate the same Chairman.
Well, I'm, I'm going to suggest that this meeting is an organizational meeting, and we need to, we have two other offices to, to deal with, and then, following that, we can get into other topics if, if we can proceed to the other, the other offices. Is there a nomination for the position of Vice Chair? Ms. Gerber?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Calabrese.
Is there a second to that? Okay. Further nominations for the position of Vice Chair? Ms. Lou McCormick?
I'm going to nominate Mr. Patton.
Is there a second? Mr. Llewellyn, seconds.
[inaudible].
Mr. Patton, you've been nominated and seconded for the position of Vice Chair, do you accept?
I do not.
Okay. Further nominations for the position of Vice Chair? Yes, Ms. Lou McCormick?
I'm going to nominate Ms. Carnell.
Ms. Carnell, is there a second? Mr. Llewellyn. Ms. Carnell, are you willing to accept a nomination?
No, because it's going to be a six-three vote anyway, so why waste time?
Thank you. Further nominations for the position of Vice Chair? Yes, Ms. Lou McCormick?
I'm going to nominate Ms. Gerber.
Is there a second? Mr. Llewellyn, seconds? Ms. Gerber? Okay. Further nominations?
Is that six-three?
I could go around the table.
Seeing no further, hands in the air, let's, I'll ask for a motion to close, close nominations. Is there such a motion? Mr. Patton, second? Ms. Pitco? All in favor of closing nominations, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Opposed? Not voting?
Right, why waste time?
But you do have to record.
I don't have to do anything, we live in a free country.
So, Ms. Carnell is not voting?
Correct.
Is that correct? Thank you. And now on the motion that Mr. Calabrese be elected as the Vice Chair of the Board, all in favor? Ms. Maxon Connolly, Ms. Pitco, Mr. Calabrese, Mr. Dwyer, Ms. Gerber, and Mr. Patton, all opposed? Ms. Eileen Lou McCormick, Ms. Carnell, Mr. Llewellyn. Anyone not voting? I think we got everybody. And then finally, for the position of Secretary of the Board, is there a nomination? Yes, Mr. Calabrese?
I'd like to nominate Ms. Gerber.
Is there a second? Mr. Patton? Ms. Gerber, are you accepting this nomination? Further nominations for the position of Secretary? Ms. Eileen Lou McCormick?
I'm going to nominate Mr. Llewellyn.
Mr. Llewellyn, is there a second? Ms. Carnell. Mr. Llewellyn, you ready for this?
I'm not.
Okay, so Mr. Llewellyn is nominated, as is Ms. Gerber. Further nominations for the position of Secretary? Seeing none, move that the nominations be closed. Ms. Maxon Connolly, seconded by Mr. Calabrese, all in favor of closing the nominations for Secretary? Please so indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight in favor. Opposed? Not voting? I'm not sure how to record your response, Ms. Carnell. Not voting, okay. The motion is carried, we're now on the main motion, and I'll ask for, for two separate votes. First, those in favor of Ms. Gerber, please raise your hand for the position of Secretary. That's Mr. Patton, Ms. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Calabrese, Ms. Pitco, and Ms. Maxon Connolly. And those in favor of Mr. Llewellyn for the position of Secretary, Ms. Lou McCormick, Ms. Carnell, Mr. Llewellyn. Anyone not voting? I think I got everybody. By a vote of six to three, Ms. Gerber is elected Secretary. And with that, I relinquish my authority. As you know, with the bylaws that we adopted, Board members need to give advance notice and a copy of the change in the bylaw that they wish to be considered at a meeting. We, and have it come in so that it can go out five days before the meeting. We've not received anything, but we can have a, not a debate on the bylaws, but we can have a discussion relative to any bylaw that a member is going to propose for our December meeting, just by topic, no debate on it, just by topic, that you anticipate putting in a, an amendment for such and such a section or such and such a condition of our bylaw, so that we can have kind of advance notice at this meeting of that taking place. And so this would be the time, Ms. Carnell, where if you wanted to entertain a bylaw change for term limits, my guess is that's what you'd be talking about, this would be the time to say, I, I plan on presenting such a motion.
Thank you, I guess it's too late, because?
I'll be off the Board next. No, this would be for December's meeting.
But you've been voted in already.
Okay.
So, has Assistant Chairman, so?
So, are there any Board members that anticipate putting in a motion to amend the bylaws? And what would the topic be if you do? I'll just go around the table this way, so, Mr. Llewellyn.
Just a point of clarification, you said that no one could present it now, is that in our bylaws? Was that pushed through in a prior one, or is that a practice?
That was voted.
That was voted?
Prior to?
Like last one, okay. Thank you, I'm just clarifying, because I can't see.
Generally, amendment to bylaws are at the end of the bylaws, so I think if you look at the back pages, you'll find the conditions under which a bylaw amendment can be presented. Mrs. Maxon Connolly?
I'm not positive that I'll be bringing forward text, but I am going to, as I promised many people, take a look at public comment again, but I'm not planning to do it via another meeting, that'll, I'll be working on it, maybe talking to a few other Board members, I'm not sure, but I'll, that's something I'm considering.
Thank you. Ms. Pitco, do you have any topics that you wish to bring forth? Mr. Calabrese?
No.
Mrs. Gerber? Ms. Carnell?
Yeah, I'll be sending them to you in preparation of the next meeting.
But you don't want to share with the Board at the moment the topic?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Patton?
I'd like to echo Mrs. Maxon Connolly's topic on bylaws, I mean on, on public comment, and to see if we can possibly get, you know, some comment maybe at the end of the meeting, or split the time up, seems, that's maybe one of the things that we can all agree on.
Thank you. Mrs. Lou McCormick?
I would entertain something on public comment as well, I'll consider putting something together or not, and there, I may have another thought or two, which I haven't put together at this point, but just to give you the heads up.
So, generally, materials, I'm sorry, Mr. Llewellyn, you have another comment?
I will be bringing something for on public comment as well, thank you.
If there are three Board members, we can't have a, five Board members work on something outside of a meeting, but certainly three Board members could put their heads together if they want to try and find common ground on a bylaw amendment, but if that is not possible, and each of the three of you want to submit an amendment on your own, that's welcome as well. Any other comments before I make a final comment? None, thank you.
One, sorry.
Oh, yes, we do.
I found your, your, your bylaw here. So, it says, "Provided that a copy of the proposed amendments shall have been included in the call for such meeting." So, for the next meeting, will you need the exact?
Which is about, yes, which is about what I was going to summarize. So, normally, materials need to be into Mrs. Brown by Wednesday, so that she has time to get it into the Thursday packet that then gets delivered to our homes on Friday, and the form should be that you have typed up the section that you wish to amend, show by cross-out any words that you want to take out, show by bold any words that you want to put in, or color, red, or, you know, whatever, and that it is very clear what is coming in, what's going out, so that Board members can all understand the specific change that you wish. Any questions on the format that people should have, and the timeframe that they should have it in, by Wednesday at noon? You'd rather not have it come in at 4:59 at night, right? So, if we can, Wednesday at noon, that would be appreciated. Thank you very much. Discussion of Board Member Committee and Liaison Assignments, this is an early meeting, but, and so I'm going to suggest that any Board members that wish to change their assignments for any reason, that you get to me prior to November 30th. There are Boards and Commissions that like to hear shortly after this meeting who is going to be their liaison, and generally, those calls come in around December 1st for some Boards, so if any changes are desired, please send them in so I can take them into With no further discussion, may a motion for adjournment. Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Maxon Connolly, all in favor of adjourning, please raise your hands, say it's unanimous, thank you. So, we're out of the organizational meeting, we posted the regular meeting for 7:30, and so?
She's not in, vote Chairman one.
Okay, I'm sorry, I wasn't catching your, so it's a?
Add 60 to 170 kids moving into town that, and they enrolled in public school, that that average cost per pupil number would go down. So, I'm wondering, how is the Board planning on reconciling this, if you're introducing more kids into the district? And, you know, does the Board plan to ask for more money from taxpayers in order to bring that, keep that level the same? So, that was my first kind of concern in thinking about it. I also related kind of to the cost, and I heard, I heard some people on the Board talking about the fact that we have a social responsibility to our greater neighborhoods, and, you know, I think social responsibility is, is a good thing. I do believe that social responsibility is very important, and we should all endeavor to be socially responsible. Having said that, I'm just wondering, at what point does the need for the Board to be socially responsible supersede the need for the Board to be fiscally responsible to taxpayers, citizens, and children of the town? In other words, what specific criteria is the Board using to determine the extent to which we as a town can afford to be socially responsible, and how will it impact the services for the children who are already here in the town? So, anyway, I'm thinking about these questions, and I thought, well, taxpayers of the town should really have a chance to weigh in on all this stuff, aside from this Board meeting, that's what I'm thinking. So, I decided to look up what the requirements were under the racial imbalance law, and found that under Section 10226E5B3, "The Board of Education shall conduct a public hearing on its plan prior to submission to the State Board of Education. Adequate notice of the time and place of such hearing shall be published, and a complete record of such hearing shall be kept." So, my last question is, when exactly is this hearing going to take place? I agree very much with the State, and I think the Board should give the entire town, all the taxpayers, and citizens a chance to voice their opinions before a plan is adopted. I also ask that the Board make sure to send a district-wide email regarding the hearing as soon as it is scheduled. Thank you. And if anybody needs the regulations, I have copies of them.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the Board? Please come forward. State your name and address.
Hello, my name is Sally Connolly, and I live at 682 Tungus Hill Road in Fairfield, of course. I don't have any formalized statement prepared, but I just wanted to come and support the McKinley community. I have four children here in the Fairfield School System, and I, when my husband and I were looking for a house, he's a private school teacher, and I'm a speech pathologist, so we don't exactly make the big bucks, you know, we're public service people. And what we loved about the McKinley District is that it offered a great house, you know, a great size house for the money, and that's what brought us there. And we are firm believers in the fact that, you know, he's, we're both master's educated people, and that what we provide in our house, in addition to what they experience in the school setting, is ultimately what's going to shape them as individuals, academically, socially, et cetera. And, you know, my oldest son, who's in seventh grade right now at Tomlinson, he actually started in the McKinley pre-K program, so that's how long we've been there, that was when it was still at that school. You know, this is going to sound pretentious, but, you know, my son is, you know, was identified as gifted, every one of those special tests you do, standardized tests, he's always in the 99th percentile, and is, wants to be a computer science major at MIT. And, not to sound braggy about it, but what I want to say is that McKinley, for a student like that, addressed all of his needs, you know? They were able to move him into different things if they needed to, the teachers were wonderful, he never complained about being challenged in the school environment, he loves his, you know, best friend in the world has a Vietnamese mom and a Puerto Rican dad, you know, and we love it, you know, we love the community, we love being able to walk through our neighborhood and spend time with those families, and it's just been such a great experience for us. You know, my other kids, you know, one's ADHD, you know, this one, you know, they all have so many different needs, and McKinley has found a way to address all of them. So, really, my point in coming up here is just to say that, you know, I, I support the plan as it was presented, we had that great meeting at McKinley with the PTA where we came up with some other ideas, like potentially looking at a full, you know, a full-day pre-K in the future, maybe to attract a lot of the two-parent working families in order to transition people. And lastly, I will just say that I think we should do a little more positive PR, because from what I heard, if I'm correct, that my son's class, that, this is the other one, the younger one, that McKinley was actually fifth. Isn't that right? On like the test scores? We were fifth, by the way, fifth out of all the 11 elementary schools on the test scores that year, so, what, where was the newspaper article on that?
And have no fear that parents are allowed to brag about their children at the Board of Ed.
So, I just want to say, so, so, and I know the time is up, but just the very last thing is that, is that I think as a community, we need to be careful to stop having these derogatory remarks, and stop talking down about certain schools, because you know what? We rock, we know it, and you guys need to remember that too, all right?
Thank you. Anybody else wish to come forward and address the Board? Please state your name and?
Hi, good evening, yes, Mike Jaylee, I'm Executive Director of the Fairfield Museum, 370 Beach Road in Fairfield, and I'm here with?
I'm Christine Jewell, the Director of Education and Community Programs at the Fairfield Museum.
So, we're double teaming to save a little time for tonight, and sort of be as brief as possible, but we wanted to speak briefly in support of your discussion tonight for the District Improvement Plan, and specifically, the Social Studies Proposal for Assured Experiences. To give you a little bit of background about that, the Fairfield Museum has been providing Social Studies programming and field trip experiences for students in Fairfield for almost 30 years. Just in this last year, we did all the fourth grade, and we've done some other grades as well, but over 1,000 students come through, participate in our programs that allow them to dig deeper into their community, allow them to have really unique experiences dealing with the authentic aspects of our community, its civic life, its political life, and give them opportunities to dig deeper into being great, better citizens in their community. We have been doing these, as I mentioned, for almost three decades, and over that time, we have been working in a flexible as possible with all the schools to do that. The shortcoming of that, and with this not being an assured experience over that time, is that there are certain schools that have not participated in any given year. So, we've been working very closely with Mike Cummings and the, and the Curriculum Department here at the schools to try to make this a uniform experience throughout, throughout all schools. It's important that you all know that the Fairfield Museum, as an independent nonprofit, raises independently from private donors, close to $200,000 to support our education programs that we provide for this community. It's part of our mission, we want to do that, and we're hoping that we can take this step to work at a little bit more closer collaboration with the Board of Education and the schools.
Yes, just briefly, right? My name is Christine Jewell, once again, the Director of Education, and I just want to say that this is a really opportune time for Fairfield to fully embrace Assured Experiences with the Fairfield Museum, because the new Connecticut Social Studies Frameworks just came out, and we have worked with some of those teachers that worked on those new frameworks for years. We've worked with New Canaan, with Weston, with Monroe, Greenwich, Stanford, New Canaan, Darien. A lot of these schools are ahead of the curve, and I think it's time that Fairfield catch up a little bit, and we're ready to do this, we've been ready to do this for, for many, many years. We have all this experience working with these school districts, and we really want to take this experience and bring it to the teachers and the students. All the students deserve to have an equal experience in sharing the local history, and what's really important about what we do is that it reinforces inquiry and creative thinking, critical thinking, it encourages students to evaluate evidence and to make informed decisions and action. And so, all these programs will reinforce the new curriculum, and we will be working with Mike Cummings to make sure that the teachers have the tools that they need to really be successful with pre and post activities, so that the students are prepared and really get to experience something really special here in our town. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for being straight.
Sure thing. Well, this is the meeting where we discuss program initiatives and budget implications for the following year, so, makes sense. Anybody else wish to come forward and speak on any issue that's before us tonight? Please state your name and address.
My name is Suzanne Gosefa, I live at 165 York Road. I'm also going to read. Okay. I have been a McKinley parent for eight years. I'm here this evening to ask you to support the plan put forth by Dr. Tracy to address the racial imbalance at McKinley. I, I grew up attending public schools in Greenwich, and then I attended college in South Bend, Indiana. And it's safe to say, I had fairly little exposure to racial diversity in my own education. When my oldest child started kindergarten, it was eye-opening for me in a wonderful way. A few weeks after she started school, we attended our first McKinley's World Fair. It was such a beautiful celebration of the diversity that makes McKinley the unique and terrific school that it is. I hope as the Board moves forward in this process, that they do more PR to spread the word about all the great things McKinley has to offer incoming kindergarten families who might consider opting in. For any Board members who are not familiar with our programs, I encourage you to attend one of our events and see for yourself what makes a McKinley family so special. Throughout the process, this process of addressing McKinley's racial imbalance, many McKinley families have commented that our school's racial profile is more in line with the world that we now live in, and perhaps it's the rest of the district that has the imbalance. I would love to see an expansion of the Open Choice Program over the next few years. I think it's a win for everyone. Fairfield students get exposed to more diversity, which is beneficial, and we are providing a wonderful education to those who might otherwise go without. I love that my children have been surrounded by children of other races and religions since they were five years old. I believe it will better prepare them to be compassionate and open-minded young adults as they move forward with their education. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other Board members wish to address the Board? Please state your name and address.
Good evening, Jennifer Barahona, I'm at 74 Cardinal Street, and I'm a proud mother of a kindergartner and a third grader at McKinley. I didn't have the opportunity today, hard day at work, to prepare anything, which I normally do, so I'll do an off-the-cuff and just support my friends here that have spoken before me what a wonderful community McKinley is. I too grew up, as Suzanne mentioned, in Darien, you don't get much more homogeneous than that. My husband, a Hispanic male, grew up in Greenwich and had a horrible time being called, "Go back to Mexico," even though he wasn't a Mexican, and we chose the McKinley District because we wanted our kids, who are half Caucasian and half Hispanic, to know what the global world was, to be supported, to understand from an early young age what it is to be a global citizen with people who think differently than you, who look differently than you, and I couldn't be more proud of the education that they're getting, not only in the classroom, but just by the fact that they are with children from 30 different countries. People would pay extraordinary money to do, to go to a school like this in other parts of our country, and so, it's gutting to us as parents when it is seen as a negative and it's portrayed as a less-than school. I worked with a psychiatrist at the time, who's a Fairfield resident. time, who's a Fairfield resident, who, when I said I was closing on the house, I was closing in, she said, "Is it too late to change your mind?" You know that's the McKinley School, right? And that haunts me. That haunts my children. My daughter recently asked me if our president-elect was going to send back some of her friends to their countries. And I don't know how to answer that question for my eight-year-old. We owe it to our children to encourage diversity in every form, to encourage global thinking, to challenge them, to look beyond race, ethnicity, religion, to get to know their peers, because the only way we're going to come together as this country and bridge some of these divides is by starting our children young. And I set my three minutes, so there I go. And couldn't be more proud. I hope you support the proposal set forth tonight and that we can move forward together to think about long-term solutions. We understand that this has been an issue that has come up over the years, and that these might only be temporary measures. So let's come together to really think how we can make Fairfield the best for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wish to come forward? Please come forward. We don't have any prescribed order. Whoever gets up here first.
First and first.
State your name and address.
Hi, my name is Anna Wood. I live at 144 Noah Drive. I am an immigrant. I am of mixed cultural background. I'm married to an individual who's from a culture different from mine. In raising our daughter, who is a 3rd grader at McKinley, we held her exposure to different perspectives and cultures of paramount importance. And so in searching for an elementary school, it was just by chance that I ran into a mother at Ole Soccer. And she asked me if I had considered McKinley. I looked at her blankly, and I said, "McKinley? What is that, a private school?" And she said, "No, no, no. It's um, it's a Fairfield public elementary school." And so, and then she said, "Well, and also, it's racially diverse." I said, "Really? In Fairfield?" That's kidding aside, of course. Okay. So at any rate, as, just like other parents, I went home, did my research, and sure enough, at the great rating schools, McKinley showed up with a rating of six. And the lower testing scores and rating did not deter my family. We all know that scores, excuse me, tests, test scores are a reflection of multiple variables, and they are but a snapshot in time. Scores do not speak to the potential and overall capability of individuals. And to use that measure as a key criteria would rob the larger Fairfield community of the richness that McKinley has to offer. So I ran and scheduled a tour, and met with the principal, and after seeing children of various backgrounds interacting so effortlessly, the, I guess the expression of the deed was done, or this, we made our decision at that point in time, and we opted in. And we entered into a community that was filled with parents whose passion has translated to providing numerous activities and programs, which my friends have eloquently stated. For our children, nearly every week, we have the most active PTA and parents that I have ever been exposed to. So what did we learn from this experience? The key learning for us was that there is limited, limited and misinformation can be quite damaging. What we need to do is to educate and re-educate the Fairfield area about the benefits of the school. Perhaps by offering information that is representative of the truth, perhaps by raising awareness, we can be agents of change. And in so doing, we can raise children that are socially responsible, emotionally intelligent, and academically prepared. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wish to come forward? Thank you. Please state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Gina Jensen, and I'm at 228 Lennox Road. I have two girls at McKinley. Um, three years ago, my daughter Emily, she went to, uh, yes, she went to preschool. And one day she came home, she said to me, "Mommy, I have a friend," she said, "that she cannot play with me today, just because she's white and I'm black." So she was three, and when she came home, she told me that it was very painful. And I was thinking about going back to Brooklyn to live, because it was, I didn't know if I can stay in Fairfield after she told me that. So I found McKinley. She started to go to school there. She's very happy, and I am very happy. So we love McKinley.
Thank you very much. Anybody wish to come forward at this time? Speak on this topic or any topic that's on our agenda. Seeing nobody come forward, thank you very much. We're on to old business regarding approval of the racial imbalance plan, the recommended motion. Does the Board of Education approve the racial imbalance plan dated November 10, 2016? Do I have a motion? Mrs. Gerber, do I have a second? Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli? So we're open for discussion by board members. Is there any opening statement that Dr. Tracy would like to make regarding the changes in the plan or anything?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The board has before it tonight a proposed plan to address the issue of racial imbalance among the district's elementary schools. The plan that you're looking at tonight is essentially the same as the one that was presented here to the public back on October 18, emphasizing the expansion and to some extent relocation of our preschool program, which has been a device over the years to give youngsters at McKinley the opportunity to think about going to other schools on a voluntary basis. And second, to expand the district's participation in the open choice program from the current 72 students to a new total of 100 students over the next two years. However, I have included some additional language for the sake of clarity, which is highlighted on the copies that you have, and I just want to briefly note that. First, on pages one and two, I have quoted from the findings of the Malone and McBroom report from earlier this year, in which the consultant stated that the opportune time for the district to achieve racial imbalance would be following the completion of the Holland Hill and Mill Hill construction projects. So I provided that additional information. And second, on page eight, the plan now provides some additional detail about the cost and timing of the Holland Hill and Mill Hill renovation projects, and states that following the completion of this work, the district would be in a position to revise school attendance areas so as to reduce the disparity between McKinley School and the other elementary schools with respect to the percentage of minority enrollment. As it would not be appropriate, in my view, for, for this board to specify actions that might be taken by a successor board, the proposed plan simply describes what would be possible at that time without obligating a future board to any particular action. As I said last month when we discussed this topic, I consider this to be an interim plan that will enable the district to continue making modest progress toward balancing its elementary schools with respect to racial composition. I also believe that as the district's construction projects proceed, and as your new superintendent has the opportunity to get to know the district and, and become acquainted with available options on this matter, that more significant steps will be required. Finally, I just want to thank Mr. Cummings for assisting me in the drafting of the plan and in helping to answer the various questions that board members have raised over the weeks. With that, ready to discuss?
Comments or questions or from the board members? Ms. Pitco?
Want me to go first?
No, whoever wants to comment. Anybody? Then if you're the first person, raise your hand.
Okay. I'm making a motion to make an amendment to the racial, the motion to approve the racial imbalance plan. The amendment, and this is my first one, so please, to accept the racial imbalance plan but to exclude or omit adding any additional open choice students?
It probably means that you have to approve the racial imbalance plan amended as follows. Wouldn't that be the better form of motion? So that we know exactly where the current motion is being amended?
Okay. To approve the racial imbalance plan excluding, adding any additional open choice students?
Does the board understand the amendment to the existing motion that is on the table, which would essentially strip out?
Item two on page six, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Yeah, item two on pages six and seven. The board understand the amendment that's in front of you? Is there a second to that amendment? Is there a second to that amendment? Mrs. Gerber? So do you wish to, making or of the amendment, you have the right to make the first argument?
Yes. My concern is in the plan, we're asking to add funds, appropriate money, to build a pre-K at Stratfield. And I understand that going into the budget season, this is going to be very difficult. We've already lost ECS funding from the state, and we're going into a budget season where, I'm sorry, I don't know the increase. Is it at 4% roughly where we think we're going? I just think adding additional students right now, when we have two huge facility projects, is, is not a good option right now.
As the second of the motion, do you wish to make any comments?
I was seconding the motion for discussion purposes, although I would concur with Ms. Pitco that, you know, it does appear to me that there are budget concerns that need to be considered. You know, I think that some of the other town bodies who control the purse strings on our budget might not take too kindly to this. So there is a perception of that, and that would concern me. That said, I'm torn, because on the other hand, I believe that the open choice program provides a great service to our district, to both students in our district and students from Bridgeport. And, but that said, knowing the budget season we're heading into, it is something that has concerned me. So.
Any other board members wish to make any comment? Mr. Calabria?
While I sort of agree with you, Ms. Pitco, as far as the, being fiscally responsible and all that, that end of it, I completely disagree. And I do feel that this is the proper plan, and we do need to expand the open choice students. And I think it's a great benefit to our, our district, as we've heard from many of the McKinley parents. Many of the schoolteachers I've spoken to that are at the Dwight's and the Burr's and that have the open choice students absolutely love them. It, it just enhances the educational program all around. And I think that is the greater goal that we need to do as a town. So unfortunately, I won't be supporting your amendment.
Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli?
I think a lot of our questions at the discussion at our last meeting very much centered on that notion of what is the fiscal impact of this. And we asked Dr. Tracy a wide range of questions, a lot of them oriented around the budget implications. And in all the information that we have received, which ultimately is the reason why I would, while I appreciate Ms. Pitco's amendment, I would not be supporting it, the numbers that you reference in terms of budget numbers that we can look at, that the other town bodies will see, are not actually regarding the open choice program. The budget implications come with the additional of the pre-K to Stratfield, which I don't believe, I think most of us see the benefit of that. That was, that barely came up as a discussion topic in October, because we recognize the pragmatic nature of moving the Dwight preschool to Stratfield, that it would then have much better chance of achieving what it is that this pre-K program was set out to do. But all of these budget numbers do not involve a budget impact of the open choice. So that when other town bodies ask us why they, while they may reference it in theory, in fact, if they were looking to change our budget, it would seem to me what they would be doing would be having to add money to our budget to replace the revenue line that would be cut out from the open choice. I'm not sure where else they're seeing it. In all of our questions, unless I missed it, in all of the attachments we got, in two weeks' worth of information from Dr. Tracy, none of it pointed to a dollar amount that is associated with these open choice students. We know that they will be going to classrooms where they, it does not involve stepping it up to an additional section. Its benefits to the plan, I think, speak for themselves. Its benefits in terms of the, I mean, the state still has to approve this plan. And this is one way that the state, I think, would be, look very favorably upon our plan, keep us from needing to address something that we're not prepared to do at this point. I think this is an integral part of the plan, and I think it's important we maintain it.
Mr. Patton?
Once again, I'll echo Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli's comments and say that, you know, there are many things that have budget implications in the plan. And, you know, a magnet program at McKinley School is, is going to be, you know, far more expensive to, to create, you know, as would be the, the pre-K program than any, you know, minor dollar amounts to, to expand open choice, in my opinion. I think last month, I had even said, and I went on record as saying that, you know, I would like to see in the next five or six years to have open choice expanded beyond 100 students. Besides that it's the right thing to do, it's, you know, it does add diversity to our town in general. I would have loved to see a recording of the parents that spoke here tonight. It would be lovely if we could show the state, you know, that people actually chose to move into that district. And so it's not as easy to fix this situation as, as they might think. You know, everybody thinks that, you know, it's nothing that we can really control. It just happens. It is what it is. But people are moving to, you know, that side of town because they want diversity, you know, in their family's lives. So, I mean, that's something to think about. So I'm not in favor of this. And I, I think, for now, I think we need to kind of go as-is and see what the state has to say. I mean, they may not approve it as-is to begin with.
Mr. Llewellyn?
Just a couple of comments centered around the facts rather than any kind of view at this point. Ms. Cunnelli brought up a point that there's no financial impact. In the information that was provided to the board, there is financial impact. We do have a number of open choice students who require extra services, of which some are reimbursed by Bridgeport, which is the sending district. There were two students who have run into additional costs, and as a result, Bridgeport has, has sent us a check for, I believe it was anything over $18,000. Is that correct, Dr. Tracy?
I'm looking for the numbers, but yes, there are two students currently and two students last year who caused us to engage services we would not have otherwise engaged. And we, we did bill Bridgeport for those services, and we did get paid. And now I'm looking for the number.
It was part two of your memo dated 11/4, number one. And in that, actually, it was also in the prior memo, number six. In that, my read of the regs is that Bridgeport or the sending school should be reimbursing anything over the $3,000. But Fairfield has only billed them for costs over the $18,000, which would be an average cost assumed to 15 plus three. So can you talk to that, please?
Yeah, that is, that is correct. And that's what is reflected on the, the second page of the material that I sent out. I, I happen to think that we could be more assertive in billing. My, my reading of the statute is that anything beyond the $3,000, we could be billing. And my recommendation to Dr. Jones would be that she should look at that and, and take advantage of what I think is an opportunity in the law to ask for more money, because we're, we're laying out money for those two particular kids for special ed assistance that we would not otherwise be purchasing.
And my understanding is that the percentage of children needing extra services is 15% versus our in-district of about 11%.
That's, that's what we reported. Yes, sir.
And my understanding is we didn't bill for anything that fell between $3,000 and $18,000.
We, we did not bill for any services that could be provided by staff that are already with us. So for example, if a student needed speech and language services, and we had somebody with room in their caseload, we did not bill for that. What we did bill for in the two cases that you referenced were youngsters that maybe needed a paraprofessional or some other kind of service that we did not have on staff.
Okay. And when we talked about the alternative high school, we talked about how we would bill out, we kept track of all hours, and we'd bill that out. One of the questions I had for you is, what was kind of the sum of that value?
That I don't know. We did not, so far as I know, calculate a value. We simply took advantage of staff that we had with us for those youngsters.
Okay.
We, I'm sure we could back, go back and try to figure it out, but I, I don't have that number.
But it's fair to say that it's not no cost?
I'm sure it's not zero.
Okay. And so the, the other question I had is, an article I had seen, it actually came out, was it last week, week before? And it was about the Bridgeport schools looking for-
And it was about the Bridgeport schools looking for money from neighboring schools to send children to the magnet schools that are kind of within their bounds. And it appears as though, when this was brought up back in May, it was about $21, $200, and now it's $3,000 per student. Can you address that, and what will that cost, Fairfield?
I think that is a separate topic.
It's actually all, it's all quite related, thank you.
Separate topic from the racial imbalance plan. So, please stay on the motion that is on the table at the moment, which is the amendment to remove open choice. So, please stay, keep your arguments to that particular amendment.
Well, open choice is the reciprocal of this program, so I'm actually going to go down this road for a minute, and you'll have to indulge me.
No, I'm not indulging you.
I also heard we have a $200,000 bill coming in for back, is that true?
You are speaking off of the motion.
No, actually, I'm not, Phil. That's your opinion.
I will rule you out of order, because you are not speaking to the motion that's on the table.
Okay, I'll go down a different road. 25 cents, sorry, let me be precise, 23 and a half cents of every dollar spent in this district is for extra services. If we have $165 million budget, and you do the math, it's about $38 million. So, you take the average cost of that, and you say that 15% of the kids coming in from open choice may need extra services, and apply the logic, there's not, you cannot say there's no cost to this. You can do the math. And I also have a huge issue with them charging us, yet not paying us.
Are you finished with your comments?
No, I'll pause for a moment, let others go, but I've got more things.
You're pausing for the moment so I can ask if anybody else wishes to make comments?
Sure.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to make comments on the amendment that is in front of us? I'll make a couple of comments, and I think Dr. Tracy wants to make a couple of comments. I have to remind the board, I believe, that the racial imbalance plan that is in front of us is based on a principle that this board and about three other boards of education with different members have adopted over time that is surrounded by two or three concepts. One is, we want to maintain our neighborhood schools. And so, we need to present a plan to the state that will allow them to say, okay, we accept your plan and will not force you to redistrict. And if we don't present a plan to the state that they find acceptable, that will be the result. So, if you don't want to redistrict, you have to send the strongest possible racial imbalance plan to the state for their review. The second concept that we have always had in this plan is one of voluntary. We've not wanted to get into where we are requiring streets or, or schools to do something by requirement. We have tried to adopt plans that allow them to opt in or opt out or participate in a preschool program on a voluntary basis, because we think that choice is important. We have addressed the cost of, the question of cost over time in saying, what is the reasonable cost to preserve not redistricting? What is the reasonable cost to preserve the voluntary nature of this plan? We know there's been a cost. There's been a cost to preschool. We know there is a cost. But if we redistrict, we also know that we sometimes make a decision that says, well, maybe we shouldn't send that kid who's in their last year of school to another school. So, we've entertained grandfathering at a cost of additional bussing, because we accept that additional cost as a reasonable cost to maintain the neighborhood schools and to maintain the voluntary nature of this plan. I do take exception to one member's comment that these open choice students cost us money. When you are using existing staff who are there, and if they have room on their schedule to be able to serve a student, whether that schedule is vacant and nobody is served, or whether they serve a student, it doesn't cost us any extra money. 15% of the open choice students have special education services, 11% of Fairfield students do, there's a marginal difference there, but we do bill out the additional costs that are incurred, and we collect that money. I think Mr. Llewellyn's research that says perhaps we should be more aggressive, and every cost over $3,000 should be billed out, is a good learning. And, and I would suspect that our new superintendent will be more aggressive in ensuring that we cap the expenses at $3,000. And if you look at, just do the math and say, 100 students are going to come to us, 15 of them, 15%, will require $3,000 worth of special education services, anything above that will be billed out. Well, then you've got 85 students times the 3,000, or it's a net benefit to the district. It's a net benefit to the district. I think Mrs. Maxon Canelli is correct, that if, if we did not have those extra students, where would we find the additional revenue that those students would come? Yes, we are proposing 14 additional students. There have been years where we have added 12 or 13 students in a year, and there have been years where we have been as much as, as high as 79 students. Whether open choice is in this plan or not, we've already been there, already done that. And so, the, the idea that we're adding 14 students is a major departure from what we have done in the past, I, I don't see it. It, it is a net benefit to us financially, it's a net benefit to us educationally, because a more diverse student body is a better student body for our children to learn in. And I don't think that anybody here should walk away and say, this is just a dollars and cents issue. This is an educational issue, and our students are better off by having a more diverse student body in all that that means. And so, I think open choice helps us in that regard. I'll stop there, because I want to keep my comments to the open choice program amendment that's on the table. Any other board members wish to talk? Before I, let me get to Mrs. Lou McCormick, she hasn't had a chance to speak yet, and then I'll recognize Mr. Llewellyn. Mrs. Lou McCormick.
I couldn't agree more with all the comments, that diversity is wonderful for learning, it's great to make us a global society. All these things are true, but there's also an element of pragmatic reality that we have to face, particularly in a year like this, when we're all anticipating a very difficult budget. We're spet, we're going to be spreading or diluting our funds and our parent-teacher ratio over additional students that aren't necessarily, that aren't part of the Fairfield district. And we have to ask ourselves, is this the right time to be doing this in a year when we have short funds? Now, you can say that there's zero additional cost. In our hearts, we all know that that's not true. It's just not true. That's like saying in every classroom, every kid over number 17 is for free. If we looked at every classroom like that, then we would say hundreds of kids actually are zero cost. We all know that that's not true. That's just not true. Every child that comes here, there is a cost. Some kids attract more funds, and some kids attract less. The problem is, is the budget is finite. Those same amount of dollars have to be spread amongst more kids, and we have the same resources. So, there's a dilution of what's going on, and there is also going to be a question as to, if we do this, what the potential impact will be on the programs that we have in our DIP program and the programs that we have currently, because we've seen in years past, what happens is when we pre-approve and we spend money without having thought through what the future implications could be, we had our world language cut. We had our gifted program cut. Suddenly, we had to start paying to play sports at our own school. We have our own students paying to park here.
Lou McCormick.
No, this is my point, Mr. Dwyer.
First, please speak to the board, not to the audience.
Oh, well, I'm speaking to whoever, to everybody. So, at this point, I would have to say that there is no clear zero number. There is a cost. And if we don't think about this practically, I am concerned that our students, the Fairfield students in particular, are going to pay, since Fairfield taxpayers are the ones funding this education. Now, I love diversity. I love diversity even more if the diversity was in the Fairfield, you know, population, because they're contributing to the pool that is funding our kids. So, we have diversity in Fairfield. Fairfield's not void of diversity, it's just, I think the problem the state has is that it's concentrated in more areas than others. Would it be nice to dilute it everywhere? Yes, so that every place is high, but the problem is, is that's not the way it's happened. And so, the question is, is we have 23, you know, I guess 23 kids is the number that puts it off, or 20 kids. So, do we really have to attract hundreds of thousands of dollars of additional cost, rather than just saying, you know, let's think of a permanent solution? Why do we keep putting Band-Aids and incurring more and more and more unwindable costs every year? It's like we're ballooning our budget costs for no reason, and, and it just doesn't make practical sense to me. I, I could also see the case where, if we're happy and we believe that we know what we're doing and our population is happy with the diversity that we have here, why not go back to the state and say, you know what? We're sticking with what we have. We don't need to do anything. We have diversity just the way we like it in Fairfield, and all the people are happy, nobody feels cheated, there's no segregation that's going on in this town, which is probably what started this rule years and years and years ago. It's probably out of date. It's out of touch with where people are today. We could do that as one alternative, and that's a hard pushback. We're not going to spend any more money to address this ridiculous old rule, or we say...
Excuse me, point avoider, is this now to the amendment, or is this to the racial imbalance plan which you're looking to reject?
This is the open choice.
You're now talking generally about the entire plan, so I think you need to...
I'm talking to the open choice concept.
Please, please.
So, my, my point with the open choice is that on this amendment, right, we push back, and we don't, we don't do the amendment. We don't do the open choice. We don't do this program, because we don't believe we need to. And we stick to how our diversity profile is within Fairfield, because this is how the people want it. Or, we say that we're going to change it, and if we do change it, we want a solution. I don't believe the open choice creates a solution. It's a completely separate issue if we want to do helping our neighboring town. That's a different initiative than resolving the racial imbalance, which is the point of this. And I feel that the open choice does not address it, directly or indirectly. We have no certainty that it is going to fix it in any significant way. Why? Because the numbers would have to be huge. To move 10 other schools up a percentage to help one school that's moving very rapidly, that's a huge cat amount. The numbers don't make sense. Why would you do that? It's fiscally not the most direct or efficient way to do this. So, if we're trying to resolve the issue and, and follow the rule, then why would we do it that way? Or, if we're happy with the way we're set, why do we have to listen to the state and let's push back a little bit? Let's tell them that we know what we're doing, the people are happy, and let's stick to it and see what they say.
Thank you. Mr. Llewellyn.
A couple of things. Let's go back to some of the facts. You said there is, there's no cost, that it's marginal. As a result of...
Thank you for correcting, and I said it's marginal cost, and what we have generally accepted as a reasonable cost.
That's fine.
Thank you.
So, if we take a look at Dwight, we actually have an extra section as a result of the concentration of kids in one particular grade. So, there we have a full teacher, fully loaded, cost $100,000, give or take. So, we've got that there. So, that, that is a, a true cost. We lost, we have 30 less kids in, in elementary this year than last, and Ms. Muntzal is going to explain to us why we added eight additional FTE in, in terms of full-time staff at the elementary level, when we lost both sections and, and students. So, there, there has to be some cost somewhere, I think. Let's also go back to a couple of facts. Bridgeport is 99.9% eligible for free and reduced. Here is the chart you presented to us a couple of weeks ago on how well we're doing educating our free and reduced. It's the red line. The red line is below Fairfield, it's below state average. So, you're asking us to do our civic duty to bring kids in, to make you feel as though we are helping these kids, yet I don't think the results show that we really have our shop in order on educating the free and reduced. I'm not sure why. If people can tell me why the gap is so huge, I'm not sure just bringing them in and allowing, allowing them to come here is necessarily the answer. I do have a question, though, for you, Mr. Dwyer, in terms of your voluntary piece. Where in all of this is, is the voluntary? You said this is what boards have done. I don't see it in, in the redistricting mantra or the eight guiding principles. So, where do you get your voluntary piece?
Is that your question?
That's my question.
I'll limit my answer to the open choice amendment that is on the table. Students from Bridgeport have a choice to participate in that program. This district has a choice to participate in that program. And for years since the Chef Vionniel case, this board by policy has said, yes, we will participate. But that was a choice we made, and students who get up in Bridgeport and come to Fairfield do so by choice. So, the open choice program is exactly that.
Thank you. So, you've clarified, you're talking about the open choice aspect, you're not talking about this wider...
I am responding to the amendment that's on the table.
Correct.
When we're back to the main motion, we can talk about the additional issues.
Specifically to the open choice. That's fine. Okay. And, and you know, it, it's not a dollar and cents issue, because I do think that we do need to educate the public. I do think that we need to kind of get our shop in order before we take on more kids. I also think that the public needs to understand that, you know, there's no free lunch. So, for you to sit here and say, each marginal child is free, you're absolutely correct. But at some point, the marginal ends, and you're into kind of that next layer, as, as you are at, at Dwight. And I see Jen here next to me looking for, for the answer. So, the answer is there are six kids, and if you were to eliminate those six, you wouldn't have 51, you'd have 45, and you'd be under the cap. I'm not saying we do it, but by the fact that we couldn't do it if we wanted to right now. So, that, that's the answer, that's the question you're going to ask. Thank you.
We do seem to be arguing over numbers.
They do kind of run the world.
This is more than a numbers debate, but clearly, one board member and myself have a different view of that life, and then I'll ask Dr. Tracy what comments he wanted to make.
Just on...
After I make this comment.
Sorry.
100 students, 3,000 per student, that's $300,000 that we will get paid. 15 students who may require $3,000 worth of special education costs means that we reduce that 300,000 to 255,000, if we properly bill out what we're allowed to bill out. If one or two of those students cause us to have a new section somewhere in some future year, the year that we bring them in, we make sure that we assign them to schools that don't create a section, but in a future year, that may happen, you don't know with demographics. So, if that, two times about a $55,000 cost for a new teacher, you know, in elementary school, if we have to add a section, we hire a relatively new teacher. That's generally what it is. That further reduces it, but it's still down to a net positive that we receive, taking a couple of sections that we might have had to add. It's still at about 180, 190,000 net positive that covers the marginal increased costs of, of additional student that is sitting at a desk with a teacher, with a textbook that already exists. There are marginal costs, I don't say it's zero, but they're more than covered by the, the tuition that we get from Bridgeport. Dr. Tracy.
Thank you. Just on the question of costs related to open choice, as, as was mentioned earlier, we do bill for what I call extraordinary costs for two youngsters that we have to go out and hire extra services. As to the routine special ed costs, those who can be served by people already on staff, I would say there's not a dollar cost, because they're already on staff. One could argue that there's a, there's a time cost or an attention cost, and I'm not sure how to calculate that, but there, there is that. Looking at some of the details of where we might put the additional students that are proposed here, it, it appears, based on current enrollment projections for next year, that there would be more than enough circumstances, grades in schools, where we could locate open choice youngsters that would not trigger an additional section. Having said that, I also looked at the, the current array of elementary classes, and there are in fact three situations, Mr. Llewellyn pointed to one of them. I believe they're all in the first grade, where if you back out the open choice students, there would be the opportunity to reduce a section. Now... Now, there'd also be a sort of unmeasurable cost in terms of increasing the class size for the remaining Fairfield students when you do that. But there are three situations that, that I was able to identify where backing out the open choice kids would allow you to make a reduction. And that's the problem with trying to quantify the cost because I, while I would assure you that youngsters coming new would be placed in grades and sections that would not trigger an additional section, I certainly can't say for the next four or five years, I guarantee you that their presence would never, you know, create that kind of situation. That's just the reality of trying to figure out and grasp what, what this all costs. That's it. That's all I wanted to say on the amendment. Thank you.
At some point, because we need to go to the public, how many more comments before we go to the public and then come back to the board for further discussion? I see Mrs. Maxine Cunnelli's hand up and then followed by Mr. Llewellyn.
And actually, thank you, Dr. Tracy, because you exactly captured my point, and I think it's worth reiterating. When board members at this table have argued about the cost to the district of diluting a teacher's attention, you cannot then ignore the cost when it's done with solely Fairfield students. That that situation referenced by Mr. Llewellyn at Dwight, which then would have resulted in class sizes of twenty-two and twenty-three versus their current seventeen, well then that means we are getting, according to their criteria, we are getting a better education for those students at a better cost. That was your, your own words, other words that were used. And to Mr. Llewellyn's mantra of let's stick to the fact, I appreciate his sense of civic duty to these free and reduced lunch students and that his concern that they might not be getting the education that they want. I would only say that I think that's something I would be very comfortable leaving up to those Bridgeport families if they think that that, according to him, substandard education is not infinitely preferable to the one that they're getting. I would leave that up to them. And I also think that it is wildly inappropriate to just do a backhanded negative slap at our staff and the job they're doing. We know that this is an area in need of attention. It's regi, that's noted in our district improvement plan. We are addressing it. And to undercut people in such a manner, I don't like that coming from this board. In terms of the idea of going back to the state, I'd be curious if any board member who's using a phrase like, let's go back to the state and get them to rethink that on, for example, this amendment, if anyone has actually done any homework on that issue. I know I have. I've spoken with people inside Fairfield and out regarding the mood at the state. I can assure you that we would get a decisively negative reaction from the state with potential financial impact. So, if you want to talk about being quote pragmatic or pro, quote, practical and political, we would face a backlash, that we would be absolutely remiss if we don't have that as an explicit part of our conversation. There will be repercussions for the town of Fairfield if we were to do something like that. Additionally, to say that this is not directly, and again, I quote, not directly or indirectly helping, well, that's wrong. Dr. Tracy gave us a chart showing directly where our racial imbalance numbers would be if we did not have the open choice program. So, that is an irresponsible statement. To then also reference, and I quote, ballooning costs for no sense. Please point to me the ballooning costs. I know I have an image in mind when that participle is used. I would like to know what these ballooning costs are because I don't see them. I see this as being fairly a constant. And finally, to Mr. Dwyer's point about the voluntary measure, this is something going back to two thousand and four. And the work of the Cultural Diversity Task Force, the work of the recommendations before this board, even when it was being reexamined, it was always the intent, and I don't think everything has to be prescriptive in its language, it was the, always the intent, which is what made it embraced by the town, for this to be voluntary in its nature. And so, I just want to confirm the fact that that is in fact something that was very much a part of this in the mood in Fairfield.
Mr. Llewellyn? And then if you don't mind, after Mr. Llewellyn's comments, I'll go to the public for comment on the amendment. Okay. Then after Mr. Llewellyn and Mrs. Lou McCormick, we'll go to the public. Thank you.
I'll defer for the moment.
Since it sounds like you've done research with the state, Ms. Cunnelli, then it seems as if we're left with no choice but to actually comply with the statute. If we are then forced to comply with the statute and there is absolutely no hope of turning this over and, and having the will of kind of the town itself speak, then we have to comply. In which case, kicking the can down the road and incurring new costs every year for some new strategy that may or may not aggravate the situation, such as the opt-in, which aggravated it, and the opt-out aggravated it. And now we have kids, if you had taken the thirteen that had opted in out, we wouldn't have a twenty-kid issue. We would have a seven-kid issue. So, we are taking steps every year or every couple of years, we keep putting forth a new plan with new Band-Aid solutions to kick the can down the road with the hopes of what? At this point, you've made it very clear that there is no hope of the state changing the statute. Therefore, we should fix it. We should resolve it then. We should find a permanent fix, right? And you've come back and said, well, why don't you have one? Well, if this was my responsibility-
Jen, please restrict your comments to the open choice amendment.
I am. This has everything to do with the open choice, and I'm also responding to Ms. Cunnelli. If it was in fact, you know, our choice, we would keep things the way they are. It's not our choice, as you've stated. And therefore, if we need to fix it, then we should come up with some permanent solutions. We've looked at the consultants' recommendations again. They are limited. The scenarios are limited. And I think if you look at some of them, they probably could have worked. And if we tweaked them, we probably could have gotten them to be even better. We took a look at some of the preliminary or very rough transportation numbers. If we have to move kids, and that's the idea, is either move them from Bridgeport or move them within, what's the least disruptive? I don't know. I think maybe we should go to the town. I think we have to actually go and think about, if there actually is a requirement that we should go to the town before we do a racial imbalance plan, we should go to the town and get their opinions before we, a party of nine, make decisions for everyone because this goes beyond, this, this, this whole movement here, it seems like it's laying the groundwork for not just thirteen kids, not just twenty-six kids, but are we going to do this indefinitely? That's my concept of ballooning. Are we laying the groundwork for then taking in and spreading Fairfield funds over more and more and more kids from Bridgeport? I don't know. I won't be here maybe in several years. There'll be a new board now. But are we laying the groundwork for that kind? Is that the intent of what this board is doing? Because it's not clear to me that it's not. By the way everyone is talking, it seems to me that we want to start this and start this role in an, every year, we're going to bring more and more kids, but those kids are not bringing funds with them outside of the three thousand. So, are our Fairfield dollars going to be stretched thinner and thinner and thinner every year? That is my question. When we have a lot of diversity within town, and if we have to make the hard decision at some point, we're going to have to make the hard decision. We can kick it down another year. You can kick it down another two years, three years, each year accruing a new two hundred, three hundred, four hundred, one hundred thousand dollars of cost, right? Every year, we can do that. We can aggravate the situation, opt-in, opt-out, making it grow even faster. So, then we have to take even more kids. We could expand our schools so that we have, how many are we going to have? Seven hundred extra seats now? And then when our population declines, we're going to have eleven extra seats. What are we going to fill them all with Bridgeport kids? I don't know what the intent is, all right? I can't say what the intent is. But we are taking some very contradictory steps. We're expanding the size of our schools. We have a shrinking population. And now, we have a shrinking budget, or not shrinking, I should say, we have a very tight budget. And now, we want to spend more and spread it outside our mandate to students outside of our town. We want to be more generous to them. And we want to open it to pre-K, which is not part of our K through twelve mandates. Now, we're taking existing K through twelve funds and spreading it thinner. You tell me how we can't be concerned that our existing programs are going to be touched? How can we not be concerned? I am concerned. I'm also concerned that we overexpand and then we, at some point in the future, find that we need to close one of our schools or one of our schools is impacted, unless, of course, the plan is to fill them with kids from the outside and we're going to keep infiltrating. So, so I'm not understanding this expansion with all this. So, the open choice question to me isn't clear, and I do know that it doesn't fix the racial imbalance problem. So, because there's all these complications, I think we should go out to the town. I'd like to hear more about it from the people so we can get a clear understanding of what the thoughts are, of what, of what the whole town sentiment is. I understand where the McKinley folks are. They want to preserve their school the way it is, and they're happy doing whatever it takes to keep it there because they love it, right? But the question is, longer term, we have to fix it. How are we going to fix it? This is not going to do it in one false swoop. This is going to be an ongoing process, which is the ballooning that you're offended by. And I don't mean to offend you, but it's a concept of meaning that it doesn't go away. We're continuing to kick the can down the road. And so, this does not resolve the issue in my mind.
Mr. Llewellyn, did you mean to defer until the public or not?
No, I'll go. Just, you know, you, you, your representation, and I'm going to paraphrase here, is that it's three hundred thousand dollars of revenue, less some money, gives us, you know, a net two fifty. Fair enough paraphrase?
I believe it was down to around one eighty, one ninety-
One eighty-one.
When you take into account the additional sections that may or may not occur in any given year.
And let me give you the math from a different perspective. We spent thirty-eight million dollars on special services. We have eleven percent of ten thousand students or eleven hundred students who receive special services at an average cost of thirty-four thousand dollars per student. We have seventy-two students coming in under open choice. Fifteen percent of those need services. That is eleven students. Eleven times thirty-four, average cost, three hundred and eighty thousand. So, we're going to take in something, and no, my math is not right, but it's the same logic you're applying in the reverse. So, just thought I'd share that with you.
Thank you. Because our costs are capped at three thousand, I, I think the logic is a little bit different. We'll go to the public at the moment to see if any members of the public who have not already spoken on the racial imbalance plan wish to come forward and speak. If so, please, to speak to the amendment and the amendment only. Let me, um, let me back up my statement. Sorry. Because there's an amendment on the table, any member of the public who is here may speak to the amendment. Just please don't drift off of the amendment and talk about the larger plan if you've already come up to address the larger plan. Please state your name and address.
May I?
You can talk about anything because you did not speak before, but you have to speak on the amendment. That's what's on the table at the moment.
Thank you. And my name is Kristin McCarthy-Wehhi. I live at sixteen twenty-five Melville Avenue. I serve as a state representative on the Education Committee, and I'm a former member of the Cultural Diversity Task Force. If I may ask a question, will I be allowed to speak on the main motion, having spoken on this amendment?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. The question with this amendment is about whether by passing this amendment, you weaken or strengthen your case with the state. There is a statute in place at the state that must be adhered to. We have been through this. A number of you at this table, along with me, for years have been a part of this conversation. So, the question about this amendment is, by removing this piece of the amendment, will it strengthen or weaken the case of the state? And why that's important is, if the state then comes back, and that's not the committee that I serve on, but the State Department of Education, I do not have a vote there, if that group then comes back and says, we're not satisfied with your plan, you're forced to redistrict, which I understand some at this table believe we should hear from the town. I've knocked on thousands of doors in our town over the years, and I will say what I have heard very clearly at this, at these meetings here, at the doors I've knocked on, and at all the community meetings I've been to, this town does not want a wholesale redistrict. The people in this community treasure and value their neighborhood schools. One of the things that's so amazing about our schools is that everyone in town says our school, our elementary school, is the best school. So, the question that you need to ask yourself about this amendment is, will this improve your case with the state or will it weaken? I'm certainly tempted to address some of the other broader issues and have another broader conversation about open choice, but I believe that's the question before you. And I would urge you to vote against this amendment in terms of cost as well. So, thinking about the longer-term potential costs that may be incurred as a result of this. Thank you.
I think I saw one other person wanting to come forward. Please come forward. State your name and address.
I'm Llewellyn, Fairfield resident. I'm going to go back to what a former public speaker commented on, on the regs of the Connecticut state, where under preparation of planning, this Board of Education shall conduct a public hearing on its plan prior to submission to the State Board of Education. Adequate notice of time and place of such hearing shall be published and a complete record of such hearing shall be kept. Was that done? Is that done?
We take public comment, but not engage in public discussion.
But did you have a public hearing on this plan? And was there proper notice? And maybe, would you be able to help us on that? Ms. Wehhi? Was there?
Again-
Under the state regulations, that's what it says.
Again, we take public comment-
So, are we in violation? That's my question.
We do not engage in discussion back and forth.
Was there proper notice, adequate notice of time and place of such a hearing? No, I'm assuming not. So, maybe someone has to file that with the state. And another issue too, that I want to bring up, and I think this board is ignoring, that there were concerns raised, raised in two articles by the Fairfield citizen. And also, we had some high school students here talk about some issues that they have in high school, where racism in Fairfield is a significant problem, and I'm quoting that, between the high schools. And even the interim superintendent agreed that the discussion on this issue between the schools was sparked because of an offensive comment. But, and I'm quoting, it's much, much wider than that. So, instead of addressing this racial imbalance across our entire district, this board is fixated on only balancing it on one school, McKinley, basically twenty students. And from what I hear from the parents in this room who are McKinley parents, they enjoy their school, there's diversity, and they're learning so much. And don't you think this whole community can benefit from that? We should be leveraging that. So, what is wrong with redistricting so other students in this community can benefit from it? I don't know. I don't understand why we have to have a school that just wants to be isolated and not share that because then it could fix the problems at the high school level. And I think we're missing that point. And it sounds like such a wonderful school. I think all children would benefit from it, parents, and also the middle school students and the high school. So, I'm asking this board to take that into consideration. What's wrong with redistricting? So, we all can share in the diversity in this community. It's a gift and we should, we should be embracing this. But I do want to know about the regs too, because I will file.
Thank you. And the other member of the, yes, you want to-
You said I'm allowed to speak just on the amendment. Only on the amendment. Okay. Hi, Trish. I know many of these people personally too. So, I am going to say I don't agree with you. I don't agree with the amendment. But I, my point in this, though, is that I think everybody's getting a little bit distracted with talking about all of these what-ifs. And right now, this meeting is being called to order because the state, whether we like it or not, whether we agree with it or not, whether, I'm losing my focus a little bit, but whether we agree with it or not, we can't change the fact that the law is the law and that Dr. Tracy and the Fairfield Board of Education need to submit this proposal, what is the date? It's like a few days away, right? It, it needs to be submitted in a couple days. If you do not submit this proposal in a timely manner, then you're going to be in even deeper trouble. So, basically, I feel like everybody just needs to kind of come together, okay? Just put it out on the table. We all kind of know that this is a placeholder, that it's, I hate to say pie in the sky, but basically, you're just kind of stalling the state a little bit with putting in this plan. Not everything's changing dramatically overnight.
If I could remind you to target it to the end.
Oh, I'm sorry. And I'm so back on the topic right now of just the open choice thing. So, that's all I'm saying. Focus. Everybody focus. The open choice thing, there's not going to be a million kids overnight, okay? going to be a million kids overnight, okay? It's just a small integration here and there in order to address the plan. It makes it stronger as a plan. And if we don't address it within a couple days, or at least submit the proposal, which maybe then could be tweaked a little more here and there down the road as needed, it just needs to be done. That's all I'm going to say.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak to the amendment and the amendment only? Please state your name and address.
Suzanne Meska, 123 Rygate Road. I applaud Ms. Pitco with your amendment. I really do. I think it's a very smart way of looking at this problem. What really has saddened me is that, I'm sure the intent of the state when they came out with this, was to make sure there wasn't inequities in a school district. And this discussion really saddens me that we've gone down a road of talking about racism and them, and we're filling seats to meet quotas. I'm sure that wasn't really the intent of this. I applaud Ms. Pitco's because, to be honest, you know, while I appreciate we are parents and we have children in the school, there are many people in this town, unfortunately, who are seniors, who are struggling to stay in this town. And as our budget increases to meet educational needs, it does impact others. And we've used the term "one town," right, many times, and I think we have to be cognizant from a budget perspective, regardless of our social responsibility that many of you feel very strongly about. I agree with Ms. Pitco. I think that if the preschool program has not basically done what we need it to do, and it is an $800,000 cost to the budget, you have to make a decision. Either we keep open choice and we let open choice kids in, in which case then, let's release the preschool. It's not meeting the needs that meet the requirements of the state. It's not a requirement of the state. It's not addressing racial imbalance. In which case, if that's the case, that relieves $800,000 off the budget, and we can bring in $300,000 worth of costs for open choice. There has to be a give and take here somewhere. We can't just keep taking a program that is not working, which we are admitting it's not working, and then keep layering something else on top of it. So I applaud Ms. Pitco. I think what she is saying is right. At some point, this board has to sit in front of the rest of the town and is going to have to explain costs. And if we've got something that was put in here five years ago to meet racial imbalance, and it is not meeting that requirement, and it is not a break-even cost analysis to this budget, then maybe we have to make a stronger decision. On the case of redistricting, with all due respect...
Again, to the open choice program.
I'm only addressing, okay, and it is impertinence. The question that had been raised about, you know, what happens if you tell the state, "We're not going to do it"? Well, we kind of did that already. We went up to the state, and we spent money on a consultant, and we said, "We're not redistricting." And to be honest, I did look into other towns, like New London and Greenwich, who have basically said to the state, "Look, we're not redistricting. We're really happy here." And the state doesn't come back, at least in those two cases, and I can look at others, and said, "No, no, you're going to redistrict." It did come up with a more expensive plan, which was a magnet school. And we're already talking about magnet programs. So my concern here is, I like Ms. Pitco's plan. I like her amendment to this. I just don't think that the meat in this plan is really fully vetted to be prepared if this even is not enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the public that wish to speak to the amendment and the amendment only. Then we're back to the board on the amendment. Ms. Pitco, you made the original amendment. You've been quiet since. So do you wish to comment?
We went down a rabbit hole, so I'd just like to clarify why I made the amendment. My concerns have to do with adding open choice students. And when we present our rationale during budget season, just like, I'm sorry, Mrs. Gerber said, to the Board of Finance, to the RTM, to the Board of Selectmen, I just think this would be very difficult to do, given that we're already going to have a very difficult budget season. It really didn't have to do with a whole lot of stuff everybody else brought up, but that's where I was going with it.
And I believe that Mr. Llewellyn and I have different views on the facts. And I believe that when presenting the budget to the Board of Selectmen, the first Selectmen, the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Finance, that the math of revenue in, and the exact costs that we're incurring today, not the what-ifs, the today, that there won't be evidence that shows this is a net cost to us. Actually, it's a net revenue. And I believe the people on the Board of Finance, when presented those facts as opposed to assumptions, will understand that. Mrs. Maxon-Canelli, you want to comment?
I'm just kind of piggybacking on that. And that, through the chair to Mrs. Pitco, I guess I would say that when talking to the Board of Finance, for example, what budget line could we point to? I mean, to be very pragmatic and very practical about this, what budget line will we point to that if we pass this plan, they would say, because when they give us a number to cut our budget, if they were to do so, there's always with the idea, because they're not just, we're capriciously cutting money, they say, "This is with the intent that this should come from this area." What's the budget line that would be cut for this? One thing that I completely agree with Mr. Dwyer on and Dr. Tracy for mentioning, I do think the district does need to be more aggressive in going to Bridgeport to get that fully refunded. That is something which would get the attention of the other town bodies, and rightfully so. And that's something that our participation in this program therefore means we do need to look at that more sharply. But I come back to the situation that right now, what would another town body say? "We're going to increase your budget by $180,000 so that you can cut that revenue line." That's how the numbers are shaping up right now. I just don't see what, where is the budget line that they would be saying, "We're cutting your budget by 50,000, 100,000, 200,000 for this reason." I agree, there's going to be an education piece that's a very important part about this, and I certainly look forward to a united Board of Education appearing before those town bodies to make that argument. It'd be very refreshing. So, but I guess that would be my question, is exactly where would they be looking?
It's a question you can choose to respond to it or not.
I just said the rationale for it. I didn't say where it was going to come from.
Thank you. Other questions from board members on the amendment and the amendment only? Mrs. Gerber.
Well, I guess maybe through the chair to Dr. Tracy, or I don't know, one of you would be able to address this, the whole idea of being more aggressive with getting the additional funds over the 3,000. Is that something the board would have to give specific guidance on? Is that something... I'm just trying to figure out how we can ensure that that would be something we would do moving forward with all our open choice students, that any costs, I guess, or I don't know if it would be Mrs. Munsell. I'm just, how exactly does that work? I'm not really clear. And just how could we ensure that we will, in fact, do that moving forward? Because I think that that's something that would buy some goodwill with the other town bodies.
I would consider that an administrative matter, and so I'll be sharing with Dr. Jones that notion. I will point out that in looking at some of the other districts that accept open choice students, some of them don't bill for any of it. So we're kind of in the middle or better than the middle in that we bill for most of it. I think we could have asked for another 15,000 and some for each of these students. But I regard that as an administrative matter. Then you have to, you know, follow up if Bridgeport doesn't pay. They've paid what we've billed. But administratively, we could bill a greater amount, in my opinion, and then we'd hope for payment. And if not, then you go to the state and say, "They're not living up to their obligations under the law." So that's a long sentence, but I think that's something that, you know, Dr. Jones, together with the staff, could pursue on her own.
And after Dr. Jones is here, I think it would be fair, give her a couple of days to figure out her way around the building, that we might ask her to work with our Director of Finance in kind of coming up with a plan on how to address that. So I think we could hear back on that. Mr. Llewellyn?
Through the chair to Ms. Leonardi. Do you have anything you can add in terms of the ability to recover costs? If no, you can say no. You don't have to get up.
It has not been already stated.
Thank you.
Any other comments from board members before we go to the vote on the amendment?
I'm not sure if this is on the amendment. If it isn't, I'll wait. But through the chair, to Dr. Tracy, but it may end up back to the chair. I guess previously, why hasn't the administration been more aggressive in billing? And I guess that would be, if you're saying it's the administration, I would assume you mean Dr. Title or his team, or his immediate direct reports.
I don't really know the answer to that. When this issue came up, I read the statute, and my reading of it is that anything over 3,000, we could bill. Why that wasn't done in the past, I don't know. But as I say, my intention was to leave that with Dr. Jones to say, "This is an opportunity. I think the district is entitled to more."
And thank you. Then, you know, through the chair to Ms. Munsell. Maybe you can explain why, you know, we weren't more aggressive in billing what I guess the district was supposed to.
I don't know. I'm on your side.
She's our revenue center, right? I tried to save you a trip up, sorry.
When we began addressing the issue of students in the open choice program with more significant needs, you know, we spoke with Bridgeport, we then spoke with the State Department of Ed, and we worked with them to determine how to calculate the reasonable cost of special education over and above the $3,000. At that time, the State Department of Education, the Bureau staff member who was working with myself and the then Director of Special Education in Bridgeport, discussed with us the per pupil expenditure plus $3,000 kind of calculation that we came to, and negotiated between us the cost. And that's how we got there for these two students who have extraordinary costs. Up to that point, if a student came into our district, most students who come through the open choice portal, so to speak, are not identified when they are coming through initially. They are identified by the Fairfield Public Schools, and then services and an IEP is written. Most students fit into the service delivery model that's within the school. We don't hire additional staff for them. They receive services from the Special Education and Related Services staff who are there and would be there regardless. And so we don't charge for that and haven't charged for that in the past. I can go back and begin doing individual calculations for each and every student in the open choice program, see how many of them receive services over and above $3,000 in special education services. I can go back and do that calculation. It is going to be an extraordinarily heavy lift. So that's where we're, you know, I can spend my time doing that. Absolutely, I can. And then negotiate with Bridgeport on the cost. We can do that.
No, thank you. And personally, I don't think it's time well spent. That's just my personal opinion. But I guess the question is, why hasn't it been done? If I'm understanding what Dr. Tracy's saying, historically, there would be money owed to the town, if I understand you correctly.
The reason is my fault. I own it. I own it because when I learned of this provision, this is now going back multitudes of years. When we began this process and spoke between the State Department of Ed and the Bridgeport Public Schools, the then Director of Special Education, that was the consensus on the interpretation of the statute at that time. That interpretation has been reinterpreted, and now we will go back and rebill for this year. I can't go back and get what I didn't charge before. I can't do that. But I can this year and will be charging every penny over $3,000. We've already informed Bridgeport that we will do that. They're not happy. They're suggesting they will... Fight is the wrong word, but I'm tired and I can't think of another one, but that they will discuss that. And so we will likely be in some kind of negotiation with the State Department of Ed again. Can I guarantee that we'll get every penny over $3,000? I cannot, but I tell you that we will bill that way from this point forward.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else before we go to the vote? Anybody else other than Mr. Llewellyn? You get the last shot.
So Ms. Leonardi, thank you for that. Do you think it will be hard to go and get that gap now that Bridgeport has turned and started to charge us for sending children into the magnet schools? And actually, they're, I believe, going to be back billing, is it eight or 10 districts for past years?
You're commenting about the open choice students.
I don't believe so. Their issue, to me, at least in the preliminary discussions, has not been anything to do with a tit-for-tat kind of argument. Their argument, to me, is that they will question, not unlike they did when we started this, they will question the cost. And so we will have to submit kind of proof-of-cost kinds of documentation for every decision made by a PPT team. That's what I mean when it will be a negotiation. If, within the statute, it suggests that if the sending school district, so, and it's not always Bridgeport and other areas of the state, it could be Hartford or anywhere else. But in our case, it's Bridgeport. If the sending district feels that the costs are prohibitive, or that the costs are somehow unreasonable, then they can suggest that there needs to be some negotiation in the cost. That's, it's a gray area in the statute. You know, what do you do if the two districts don't agree on the cost? And then the State Department would try to come in and help us come to consensus.
Okay, thank you.
So I can't guarantee, but I can tell you that we have already let them know we'll be billing more aggressively.
Thank you.
Thank you. If we're ready for a vote, I'll ask the Secretary to read the amendment.
So the amended motion is that the Board of Education approved the racial imbalance plan dated November 10, 2016, with the amendment being excluding adding any additional open choice students as stated in Item 2, pages 6 and 7.
I'm sorry, are we voting on the amendment only, or are you voting on the whole plan?
Just the amendment.
Okay, the way you read that, it sounded like the whole deal.
I stand stating the whole thing so that it's clear to everyone exactly what we're discussing.
That we're only voting on the amendment.
We're only voting on the amendment.
Voting for the amendment and the amendment only. Is that clear to all board members? Okay. All in favor of the amendment as stated by the Secretary, please raise your hand. Mrs. Lou McCormick, Ms. Carnell, Ms. Pitco, Mr. Llewellyn, all opposed. Mr. Patton, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Calabrese, Mrs. Maxon-Canelli, the amendment fails four to five, four, five. Stated two, so do I go back to you, or... I thought I heard you say that you had two amendments that you wanted to consider. That was my miss here. That was my miss here. So we're back to the main motion.
That was enough.
We're back to the main motion. Is there any comment from the board on the main motion? Ms. Carnell.
Would you mind reading the main motion, because it's been about an hour? No, I know, but do you mind for the audience too?
Sure. It's just that the Board of Education approved the racial imbalance plan dated November 10, 2016, and that's this that we received in our packet. That's part of the agenda for this evening's meeting.
Okay, so I have a few questions, I guess, that clarity will be helpful on. It's been stated both by some of the people in the audience, and I believe by you, Mr. Dwyer, that we have obviously a time constraint to go to the state, that this is due, I think, with less than a week to go, if I'm not Friday. No hurry, we've got plenty of time. So I guess I just do want to understand, because we don't want to be late, we don't want any penalties in any respect, and we definitely don't want the state to be mad at us, or do we have to have an open hearing so that we are not in violation of anything that would stall us getting our information to the state by Friday?
We discussed this at last month's meeting. We noticed it properly for this month's meeting. We've had debate within the board. We've accepted commentary from the public. We may not have called it a public hearing, but we have certainly discussed this issue in public. We can ask the board attorney whether he thinks that qualifies per the question that was asked, but I don't think anybody here could answer that legal question except for our board attorney, which we will ask.
You lost two attorneys on the whole board. Can we have that question asked and answered before Friday, obviously, in case there's an issue?
Sure.
Okay.
We can have it asked. The attorneys will have to decide whether they can answer it quickly. I would imagine they can, but that's their time.
Okay, then my concern is, if they don't answer in time, and, you know, we don't know what anybody else's schedule is, and we do go to give the state the paperwork they've been asking, but we're in violation... asking, but we're in violation, how would that affect us? Potentially affect us?
I think that would have to be a question the attorney answers in terms of if he, if the attorney came to the conclusion that, that our actions did not comply with that statute, I'm sure that they would suggest, and here's how you will correct that. But I, I can't contemplate what that answer will be, nor what the solution would be.
Right. Because it only gives us three more days. So can that be addressed maybe as early as possible?
It's already on my to-do list for tomorrow morning.
All right. Tomorrow morning? What happened to tonight? Okay. The next question or statement, I'm just trying to, again, understand, and I want to say to, to all people in, in the audience, and I really respect and appreciate all the Mill Hill, I'm sorry, the McKinley parents, I'm Mill Hill, that all the McKinley parents came out and spoke with such great passion. I wish we could see more of that. But this is my question that confuses me a bit. Many people that spoke, including, understanding that there was a, I believe, a diversity team way back as well, you, you made reference to, and, and this proposal is about racial imbalance. And I think throughout the evening, the term was used interchangeably. So I went back to good old dictionary, the old-fashioned way, and looked up the definition of diversity, and it's so different than what we're referring to. People in the audience said, you know, I moved to McKinley because of the diversity. I did this because of diversity. I moved here. And I think that's great. But we're talking about racial imbalance. We're not talking about diversity. This is only one piece of diversity. Diversity talks about religion, sexual orientation, freedom of speech. It, it encompasses a lot, and I really have a hard time that these words have been used interchangeably, because I think there's a lot more diversity throughout this town than is being addressed by the racial imbalance. And, you know, if you want, I can type up a definition.
I, I agree with you, but we are responding-
That's a first.
But we are responding to the state request as they've defined it.
Well, that's what I'm asking. It says in the state, racial imbalance. It doesn't, if, unless I didn't see it, it doesn't say diversity. But yet, a lot of people, board as well, have used the terms interchangeably. And we clearly have an English major over there that I'm surprised didn't jump on the bandwagon, that they are two very different words, and they are not synonyms in any way. So, you know, I would like that very clear, that to use the proper term in this vote. And diversity does not, racial imbalance and diversity are just different words.
Mrs. Lou McCormick, did you want to make a comment? Is this the last comment?
No.
Before we go to a regular vote, or are there other comments?
No, we have other comments to make.
Okay. Mrs. Lou McCormick.
All I was going to say is, could we not wait until we get an answer back from the lawyers as to whether we have to have the, I guess, what was it called, the public forum or whatever, on this topic? Because before we vote, we, if we are going to have that, it would be nice to hear the public's opinion before we vote, as opposed to voting first and having the public be an afterthought. I think it'd be nice to hear the thoughts and have it incorporated within our vote. And if it's going to be able to be responded to quickly in a day or two, then let's do that first. Give the public the benefit of sharing their views before we, as a board that's supposed to be servicing the public or serving the public, take action. I would think that that would be the correct order of events, and if we can defer this for a few days, I would, I can't see why the state wouldn't think that that would be the right protocol.
So can I, I want to respond-
Mr. Llewellyn, do you mind if Ms. Pitco?
Not at all.
Ms. Pitco.
I could be wrong here, but we had a town hall meeting. We posted our agenda. We were going to talk about it today. We opened it to public comment. Does that fill the requirement?
That's not the on the topic.
Yeah, I mean-
On the agenda. That will be for the attorney to opine on when we tell him these are the steps we took, and he pays attention to the public hearing that was held where, like, 90% of the comments received from the public were on this question. Mr. Llewellyn.
Sure. And, you know, my interpretation of a public hearing is that it's solely focused on a topic, not just an item on an agenda. But I'm sure the attorney will acquiesce. Dr. Tracy, if we look at the memo that you proposed to present, and we look at page one of it, you have a couple of bullets, 1, 2, and 3. Can you point for me, please, within the Eminem?
What's it called here? Milburn, Malone McBroom.
Can you speak up, please?
Yep, the Malone McBroom document, where it says those points? Because I don't think they're actually findings that were, we're representing these as, these were the conclusions of Malone McBroom. I don't think they are.
Give me one second to see if I can-
On page 42 of their PowerPoint presentation, Mr. Llewellyn?
Yes.
Yep, on page 42.
Okay.
I've not checked to make sure that the sentences that were taken from this report are the exact same here, but I believe you'll find that the racial imbalance at McKinley and overcrowding at Holland Hill statement is number one, that pocket redistricting can mitigate is number two, and following completion is number three.
Okay.
So, so those sentences come from this report.
So those sentences, yes, that is a, a very nice way to weave it in there. Those sentences, I don't believe are the conclusions of the consultant. Those sentences, Ms. Gerber, are the conclusions on the scenarios that were set forth, which is very, very different from saying that there's no solution. That's very different. The conclusion for A, B, and C, yes, it says that, but that's not the overarching conclusion. These, I would recommend are removed from the memo, because I think they're misleading, because I, I bet if you were to put Milburn here and say, hey, could you come up with any other scenarios? They say, of course, we can come up with those scenarios. But these were the scenarios that they ran, and these were the scenarios that they contemplated on. You could take a bus and redirect that bus and solve that problem. So there, there are solutions beyond the A, B, C, D, E, F that were provided to them to assess. And, and I think that this, I think that these comments may have been in the last letter that went up there, and I don't think it was very well received. I, you know, if, if this is the plan you're going to be presenting, and it addresses what they need, I don't know if we need a preamble that's misleading. And in my view, it's misleading, because I would think that, that Malone and McBroom would not say that the racial imbalance at McKinley and overcrowding at Holland Hill and Sherman cannot be solved without school construction projects. I don't think that's true. I think they said they could do, they did say in here that they could go through and do a, a wider redistricting, or as Phil likes to call it, a pocket redistricting. So I don't know if I would want to lead with those sentences. I don't, I don't know if it adds, I think it takes away credibility rather than adds it.
Let me, let me make a couple of comments. At the last meeting, I thought some board members were asking, why aren't we talking about redistricting in this report? And so, because we know also that the state wants to be reminded, or needs to be reminded, that we took a serious look at this, and so therefore, let's give the three conclusions that the report did come up with on a page labeled conclusions, and their very firm conclusion was that if you want to maintain the kind of school district you have, which is focused on neighborhood schools, and the guidelines that this board adopted, maybe over the objections of some, but this board adopted, then they came up with six solutions. Yes, one of them was a, maybe if I use the term spot zoning, another board member will understand that. But spot zoning and pocket redistricting are essentially the same concept. Yes, we could take a bus from McKinley, pick a bus route, and say, let's send that bus to Riverfield instead. That would be pocket redistricting. If we did that, we would be busing a variety of students and would not move the needle a great deal. We'd move the needle, but not a very great deal.
You solved the problem, actually, Phil.
So, so, no, we wouldn't.
And then we can't walk this school anymore.
So, so-
Buses don't walk.
So therefore, the solution of pocket redistricting, whether you like the term or not, this board, by majority opinion, has never favored. So yes, the professional consultant presented us with one such solution, but we rejected that solution, because we said, all that that would do is solve the problem for one or two years, and then we'd have to pick another bus route. And another two years would go by, and we'd have to pick a third bus route. And by that time, we would have McKinley School down to a low utilization rate. So then we'd have to go to another school and find a bus route at that school and say, well, that bus is going to be sent to McKinley instead. That is not the kind of redistricting plan that the majority of this board wishes to do. We wish to follow the advice of our consultants, finish Holland Hill, finish Mill Hill, and address the question at that time. And that's what this board is intending on doing, and that's what is stated in this plan, so that the state does not think we've completely ignored that question, but that we are doing it in a proper fashion, based on the advice of our consultant, and based on when we can have sufficient school place, space, so that we're not addressing this question every two or three years, that we will have resolved it at that time. Other comments that board members would-
So I guess, Dr. Tracy, I would-
Mr. Llewellyn, do you want to defer to Mrs. Gerber, or do you want to-
Actually, I was still in the midst when you responded to me, so-
Please continue.
I'll take back over. Thank you. Dr. Tracy, I think that you might want to put in here, at least qualify it and say, specifically, the consultant stated that the six scenarios didn't work. I mean, this makes it sound like they did a holistic look, which clearly they didn't if they only presented six scenarios. I mean, they could come up with one if they so chose, whether it be a bus or shifting streets. There are solutions, but I think that this misleads the reader to say that there are no solutions, and clearly there aren't. There are no solutions that fit the constraints that were given at the time of the report, but I don't even believe that, because our, our fundamental guidelines don't say anything about pocket redistricting or voluntary. But we don't need to go there.
It's not up to you to change this now, it's, it's yours.
I will defer to Ms. Gerber for a minute, and then I'll come back to another comment. Thank you.
Well, I guess, to the chair, when Malone and McBroom were hired, did we as a board or Dr. Title say, these are the scenarios we want you to run, run them? Or did we say, we're looking to see if redistricting is an option? Can you see how many different options you can come up with that make, that are viable or potentially viable?
And that fit within the guidelines that the board-
That fit within the guidelines that the board-
That the board, that the committee recommended and the board voted on.
Last fall.
Correct.
So we weren't saying, we weren't giving them specific guidance, saying, only take students from McKinley and move them to Holland Hill and say, in Plan A, or only do this, or only do that. We were saying, these are the guidelines that the board has voted on. Please come up with as many different scenarios as make sense within those parameters.
Yes.
So that putting, peeling a street and putting students on a bus and busing them across town to a school that has a different middle school and a different high school feeder plan would not be something that would occur to them from an educational perspective or from a sensical perspective?
Yes. Because anytime you, as Mrs. Gerber points out, anytime you change the feeder pattern of elementary schools through middle schools through high schools, there's a ripple effect. And so they looked at the feeder pattern, and that's shown in the report here, as to the impact of different scenarios on the feeder pattern.
Correct. That, that is also part of this very lengthy-
Yes.
Report, is discussing the feeder plan and the parameters of that as well.
And they came up with the six that they thought were the viable ones, three of them that they felt were not viable, three that they felt were, and the comments about their conclusions are shown in this racial imbalance plan. Other comments that board members, and before I go back to Mr. Llewellyn, is there any other board member that wished us to make a comment that hasn't made a comment, so I make sure I include them in the discussion? Mr. Llewellyn.
So if I look at your redistricting guiding principles here, all eight of them, nowhere does it say anything about feeder patterns. It says that established neighborhoods should be maintained, natural man-made boundaries in rivers, consider the impact on busing and walkers, students currently allowed to walk to school should be able to maintain the status, long bus rides are to be avoided. We've got people, I think, moving all the way across town, but that's a whole different topic. Safety issues, there's none of that in here. If we look at Scenario D, Scenario D is actually a viable solution that was, was chosen not to be used, because we want to just kind of push this down until we have built out our schools in a declining population. Pocket redistricting can mitigate the racial imbalance, however, it results in Holland Hill becoming impending imbalanced, and moves the fewer students, but doesn't address the overcrowding at Mill Hill or Roger Sherman. So Mill Hill is just about a capacity, albeit for the open choice, we actually would be under capacity there. But Scenario D is viable. It, it, what's better, to be in default or to be impending? I think if you're impending, at least you're within the, the constraints. So my only point is, those first couple of, the preamble there, I think is a little overstated, and probably doesn't belong in a document going to the state.
Other comments from board members? If, so I'll say the last comment, and then we'll go to the public, for those members of the public that did not talk about the main motion and wish to talk about the main motion. Mrs. Max and Cannelli.
Through the chair to the board, just so that I'm clear, there are no other amendments being considered at this time. Is that correct? That this vote will be on the main motion, and then we are moving ahead?
Correct.
I have one amendment to make.
Then, at this point, I would like to defer to Mr. Llewellyn, because I'd like to get on task and not talk about the main motion. Then let's get to the final amendments. So I, if I may, I'd like to defer the rest of my comments until after we hear this amendment.
In order to get some information, I'm going to throw the amendment out so we can have a discussion on it, but I would amend-
Can I make you, ask you to be clear about what the amendment is so that we can then get it on the table and then have discussion?
I'm just going to say, my amendment is, that's what I'm doing. Yep. And that's why I gave the preamble there. So my amendment would be to close the Dwight program in, in the 1718 year, rather than have it overlap. So page 6, pre-K, Dwight, four-year-olds only, effectively strike the line.
And just so I understand from my notes, if I might, Mr. Chairman?
Please do.
Would those 18 seats go someplace else?
Would.
And, and where would you put them?
Well, they could either go to Burb, but this is why I want to get the amendment on the table, so I want to understand how many we actually have.
Your intent is not to change the 90, but to eliminate the Dwight piece of the 90?
To eliminate the Dwight piece. Correct.
Okay. I understand. Thank you.
So may I ask if there is room to clarify the amendment? If it, if the board decided to move 18 students for next year, right, is that my understanding what you want to do? Is there room at either of the two existing schools?
Oh, there are.
Or a third school? Is this, is this possible to just state that we're going to move it?
Well, the, the, so, right now, we only have 23 kids in Dwight altogether in pre-K. So the number's not 18. That's why I want to throw this on the table. 24? So they're, but they're not all four-year-olds.
They're 18.
Right. That's what I need to understand. So this is for discussion purposes. So if someone wants to second it, we can have a discussion.
So you wish to move the Dwight program starting in the-
For the moment, Phil, I wish to eliminate it.
No grandfathering.
I wish to eliminate it for the moment, and I can amend it. But I just want to have a discussion on how many kids are there. But yes, my intent is to move those kids someplace else.
Move the Dwight children someplace else for September of 17.
Correct. Correct.
And just for clarification, those are pre-K seats at Dwight. They're not necessarily Dwight children in the sense that they come from the Dwight attendance.
That's correct. Pre-K seats at Dwight.
And you're just... So why don't we say the amendment is, and we can always adjust the amendment?
That's what I'm saying.
That we can get it on the table and have discussion to move the Dwight program in...
Move the students who participate in the Dwight four-year-old program to another location.
Starting in September of 17?
Perfect.
Is that clear to the secretary? Okay, thank you. And so do you, do I have a second for that amendment? Do I have a second? You're seconding it.
Yep.
Mrs. Maxon Cannelly. Mr. Llewellyn, do you want to have your discussion and commentary on that amendment?
Please. So we have 23 children right now in the pre-K at Dwight. How many of those are three-year-olds who will be next year's four-year-olds? Do we know that?
I think it's eight.
Eight?
Could you repeat, how many current...
Currently, according to the September 30 census, we've got two sections, one with 10, one with 13. So that's a total of 23.
I think so.
So why wouldn't that be the 18 that are shown on Page Six?
Because I'm gonna assume that they're equally distributed between three-year-olds and four-year-olds. Maybe that's a bad assumption, but I'm assuming that the majority of them are not currently three-year-olds.
This was, and I'm looking to Mr. Cunningham to correct me if I'm wrong, but these 18 are the current threes that... Cummings, I'm sorry. You could've gotten off the hook.
He wasn't there?
My apologies, Mr. Cummings. That these 18 were, in fact, the current threes that would become fours.
Uh, Mike Cummings, Director of Elementary Education. There are, next year at Dwight, if there were to be no changes, there would be eight four-year-olds. Okay. Okay, thank you. And do you know how many four-year-olds there will be at Burr next year?
Not offhand, no.
Okay. So we're running, we're gonna run a bus and have a .5 FTE teacher and a .5 assistant for eight children? We could, I think, move those eight either to Burr or Stratfield, depending upon their choice, based on where they reside and what's more convenient for them. And, you know, if the kids move together with their teacher, they could all move over to one of the other locations.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, you seconded the motion?
Yeah, this was actually an issue I'd brought up a month ago that I, that I, yeah. I questioned the idea of the grandfathering in this case and the costs that would come with it. And then, of course, we're not transferring anyone. This is just, but the first option for any available Burr seats and the first option for any of the Stratfield seats should go to those Dwight families. But I agree with Mr. Llewellyn on this, which is why I raised it a month ago, that this did not seem to, in terms of something that would not be fiscally prudent, I thought this was something that we would be deemed as not the best use of our funds. I appreciate that they perhaps like being in the building. I don't even know if they are Dwight families, but it simply hasn't given us the results that we want. And so I had been in favor of this idea.
Jessica, could you put down that we agree on something, please?
I did.
Thank you.
Is, if I can ask the staff if we said, "Okay, we're going to move the Dwight program sooner," is that practically a possibility? I mean, is there room someplace? And if we said we'd like to do that, what's the likelihood?
In our, in the budget book and in our preparations, we are projecting at this point for Burr, three sections at each grade for a total of 18 sections, and at Stratfield, it is the same. It's three, three sections of each grade, so a total of 18. So I'd look to Mr. Kern, but I believe that both schools have enough. We have, by classroom size, alone, we'll be able to accommodate an extra classroom for preschool. What's not included in there is the preschool. So essentially, that's 19 sections at Burr, 19 at Stratfield.
If you're going to comment, please do, and state your name and address.
Liz McGoy, Principal of Stratfield School. Good evening. We do, we will have 18 sections, and I think we're on the margin for having 19. We're within two. But we do have a kindergarten open classroom at this point that's been open all this year, and we don't look for our kindergarten classes to go beyond three sections for next year.
So a classroom, classroom would exist?
Yes.
And I think the next question is a playground facility that would meet requirements. Is there such a playground facility that would meet three- and four-year-old requirements?
I believe Tom Cullen has the information for that, but we do have currently two playgrounds, but I think some of them might need to be updated for three- and four-year-olds.
And we did include, if I might, Mr. Chairman, in our cost estimate a, an additional playground at Stratfield for pre-K students at a cost of $20,000.
And the assumption being that we would put that in place when?
Well, it was, it was included in the 2017, 2018 cost estimate.
And it'll save us $105,000 to move it forward a year.
And so if I asked Mr. Cullen to come forward and say, "Is it practical to get that playground that we contemplated built for September of 17?"
I'm, Tom Cullen, Director of Operations. I've been working on a playground for preschool at Stratfield for the budget. My number's coming in around $43,000 for that, so I'm not sure where the 20 came from.
We like the 20 better.
Yeah, I know you do.
Okay, so we have the classroom. We have the plan in place to put a playground there. We have a question as to whether the, this plan has enough money in it, and we'd have to make sure that the non-reoccurring capital budget that we look at in January of 17 includes an adequate amount of funding for that.
Correct.
Okay. And if we pass that in, let's say, February, which is when we might generally pass the non-reoccurring plan, maybe at the end of January,
Ah, it's not non-reoccurring.
You would have adequate time to put that playground in over the summer?
Yes, but I want to correct you. It's not in non-reoccurring request.
Just within the budget?
It's in the operating budget request.
In the operating budget. So the, the operating budget, we would not get approval on until the beginning of May.
Correct.
So if we heard as late as the beginning of May...
We should still be able to get it in in the summer.
Get it in. Okay, thank you.
So what capacity do we have at Dwight right now? Sorry, at Burr for kindergarten, or pre-K, sorry, pre-K? So...
Burr is, is similar to Stratfield in terms of the budgeted numbers of sections. It's budgeted right now for 18 sections, plus the existing pre-K to continue there, so it would be at 19 sections.
And do they have an extra room that's miniature?
I don't know offhand. I don't know, Mr. Cullen. Do you, offhand, how many open classrooms they have in inventory? If we're gonna use 19 for...
Because at the same time, we're, we could take less three-year-olds in and get to the same place if the, if the playground is, was gonna hold this whole thing up. There's plenty of room there. I mean, there are only eight children.
At the moment, I believe the answer is the playground won't hold this up.
I agree with you, but we shouldn't be hunting down that path.
Mm-hmm.
It's not relevant.
Okay, so it seems as though the practical answers to your question is we can do it. I'd ask Dr. Tracy if he has any comments on that amendment, and then I'll go to other board members if they have comments on the amendment.
Thank you.
I think this is practical. My only caveat would be to echo what Mrs. Maxon Cannelly said, which is that if we establish these seats at Stratfield and eliminate the seats at Dwight, that the Dwight families currently in the program has, have first dibs on those seats. It may actually help us in terms of proximity to McKinley to attract more McKinley families to the program.
But I think that the parents should be able to opt to either Stratfield or Burr if Burr's closer. I mean, why send a kid across town if he lives up the street?
Exactly. They should be accommodated one way or the other.
I mean, I agree with you.
Okay, other board members that wish to make a comment on the amendment that was introduced by Mr. Llewellyn? Seeing none, could you read the amendment so that when I go to the public, they know what it is that they may comment on?
The amendment, to amend the main motion to include the wording, move students who participate in the pre-K fours program at Dwight in 201718, as referenced on Page Six.
To Stratfield School, was that in, no, okay.
No, it would be Stratfield or Burr, so...
Move it at the discretion of the administration.
At the discretion of the parent.
Move the students. I mean, so it could be either or.
Fair enough.
I have one question before we move to the public. Do we have an estimate of what the, what the cost savings would be for such a, for such a change?
If it's done correctly, it's $105,000, which would be on Attachment Number One, Racial Imbalance Plan, Proposed Amendments, for what was distributed on October 28th.
And so if it was 105 savings, then what is the total cost, then, of this suggested change for the pre-K, excluding anything with the open choice? I don't know who I should direct that to, through the chair, to Dr. Tracy?
Just so I, I can follow Mr. Llewellyn's arithmetic here. Your thought is that we, we would eliminate the $105,000 currently listed as a cost of a preschool program by eliminating the Dwight seats?
That's correct, because you're already gonna have buses going, right? You already have buses going to Dwight, or, I'm sorry, to Burr. And if you build Stratfield, which is a whole different discussion, you'll have buses going there. And with eight children, they can probably be absorbed without having to add the extra seats.
So actually, we would reduce the number 90 to some lesser number? What, what I had in my head is that the, we would still have the total of 90, and we would recreate the Dwight seats somewhere else. And if that were the case, I...
Well, the Dwight seats are only eight, not 18, as well. So given that they're eight, they can be absorbed, and we can save the district $100,000. Because remember, half these kids don't even exist in the program today.
Right, this is just a forecast, is what he's saying.
So under the, and that, those lists of, of numbers are listed as capacities, not necessarily enrollments. And, and we do know that the Dwight program is currently under-enrolled.
Correct, and so is Burr. Let's see where Burr is. So Burr's at 30, so you could take six of them right there and two of them over, and, hey, just like the, the good old open-choice argument, hm, the marginal kid's free, so we can only pay $105,000 here, because we're talking about too marginal.
The motion does not contemplate the exact amount of savings. We're assuming a certain amount of savings, but we're not trying to do the math right here at this table.
The math is presented at the table, though.
I would like to understand what the math is, though, as to whether this is significant or not. We're gonna inconvenience eight families, and I'd like to know what the savings is. I think we should want to know as a board. It's, it's significant if it's $100,000.
If we...
It sounds like to me, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, you, go ahead, finish. I didn't realize you weren't finished, sorry.
It sounded like what Mr. Llewellyn was suggesting was that we would eliminate the 18 of capacity, and the 236 capacity pieces would absorb the eight, giving them first priority. So then we would eliminate, the 90 would then reduce to 72. Is that correct?
Given the low utilization of current three-year-olds, next year, four-year-olds, yes. Because we've got, we're underserved at Burr by six students, so there's no cost there, and we just had a two-hour discussion how additional children are free, so we can eliminate the 105.
So perhaps if we can clarify, we have a capacity for four-year-olds only of 18. We have 24 currently enrolled. We have 24, I know, Mr. Cummings, you're thinking, please don't ask, ask me to come forward, but I'm going to. We have 24 enrolled, of which some of them are three-year-olds that would have, and you're assuming 18 of them were three-year-olds. And if we said, "Okay, those three-year-olds that we were going to have there is 18," if I'm reading it correctly, we have to find space for those 18 or for the eight that is being referenced by some board members?
And again, the eight... As provided by Mr. Cummings, not by some board members. I asked the question. I was given eight as a number, Phil.
I'm just trying to clarify it so that if Mr. Cummings misunderstood the question, he can, he can clarify it. We have a capacity of, we have 24 students there right now. Some, some of them are three-year-olds.
Eight of them are three-year-olds.
Eight of them are three-year-olds. So therefore, that's the eight that Mr. Llewellyn's talking about. And so the Dwight program has a capacity of 18, and we're assuming we're going to keep only eight there. We're not gonna allow new people to come in?
That would be the assumption, anyway.
Or are we?
I have to correct what I was trying to figure out earlier because as I understood the question originally, and I think it was similar to what Dr. Tracy understood it as, that we would reallocate the 18 seats from Dwight to either Stratfield or Burr so that in addition to the proposal of a, of a morning and afternoon session at Burr and a morning and afternoon session at Stratfield, at one of those locations, we'd be adding another 18 seats. So there'd be no, the proposal is, the original proposal calls for 90 pre-K seats, and I heard Mr. Llewellyn's comment initially as, again, 90 seats, but in, not including Dwight. Now I understand it that it would be, and correct me if I'm wrong, please, that it would be 72 seats, morning and afternoon program at Burr and a, potentially a morning and afternoon program at Stratfield, which we've determined does have room. And as Mr. Cullen said, the playground looks like it would be on track to be completed. So I want to make sure before I answer anything that that's, that's the scenario.
And the significance there is that if, if we maintain the projected capacity of 90, I don't, I don't foresee a cost savings. It's just a question of where these seats would be and where these teachers would be. If, on the other hand, we're eliminating the capacity of 18, the capacity, not the enrollment, and giving priority to the eight current three-year-olds who would become four-year-olds at the other two schools, then there would be a cost savings because we would only be sponsoring 72 seats, not 90, in the following year, when the Dwight program is already intended to be completely gone, and the plan was to have three programs of 36, one at Burr, one at Stratfield, and one to be determined. Then you would go to 108. So there would be a savings going, dropping back to 72 for the first year, meaning 1718. We would run fewer, fewer capacity.
So since we have some confusion between the two, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, were you assuming that 90 would go to 72 or would stay at 90?
Here's what I'm, 72. And here's where the savings comes, unless I am misunderstanding this, on Attachment One, where it says additional annual costs. Because Dwight would go from a full 1.0 FTE down to a .5, Stratfield would go from a zero to a 1.0, there is a net increase of a .5 FTE at a cost of $59,760. If the Dwight program is eliminated and the students and their parents given the option to transfer to either of the other two preschools, we eliminate that cost of $59,760 because we no longer have the need for that .5 FTE.
So Mrs...
I agree.
So Mrs. Lou McCormick, the, the cost appears to be $59,000 without doing the dollars.
Plus the bus of 45,8.
To answer your question, what the savings would be.
Okay, so it's, since it's not 105...
It was 105, because the bus, there are buses running to those schools already, and they're picking up eight children. So to, to run a bus, these buses go empty.
Administratively, I think we would try to do that. I, not knowing where the kids live and how many minutes it takes to get them all picked up, sometimes you have a situation where because of time, you have to deploy another bus, even though you have some empty seats, but...
From my understanding on that point, are the preschoolers put on the bus with kindergarteners and first graders and second graders? Or is there a separate? I know I knew that at one point. I don't recall now.
It was separate.
So this would be an entire separate bus at a cost of approximately $45,800 solely for the sake of eight children? And that's assuming that some of those eight qualify for that bus and aren't going there themselves? for that bus and aren't going there themselves.
Correct.
And then we'd have to see, of those who qualified for transportation, can we pick them up with other buses, given not only capacity but time?
Right, but which right now we don't do, we don't put the pre-K students with other students. They are-
Correct, they're completely-
Kept alone, so-
Have to be, yes.
And thus, to Mr. Llewellyn's point of the 105,000.
It's a savings of 105,000.
That includes the transportation, okay.
For, in impacting eight students.
And so, okay, so having said that, the next part of the question was, so what is the total cost of the pre-K then, if we deduct that 105K ignoring the open-choice element? What is the total cost to do this pre-K program? So for two years, what will it be for year one, and what will it be for year two? Because then we have to now increase, the plan is to then grow a third pre-K without even knowing that the first two work, that they've even made a dent, we're planning on also approving something to allow a third one, which I think is completely premature, since we haven't even seen if moving to Stratfield even works, because we saw that Dwight failed. So, and we have no evidence that Stratfield will work yet, and yet we now want to approve a third one, so that makes no sense to me, but I'd like to see at least what the cost is for the two.
Which is in front of us with the startup costs at Stratfield.
So can somebody just say what the number is, just so I'm clear? I just want to make sure I'm not like-
$54,375. Or, no, no, it's the 40, excuse me, it's the $40,500, the additional one-time cost to start the program at Stratfield.
$20,000 for a playground, which we just heard is 40. Technology of 11, and furniture of nine, for a total of $40,500.
Right, no, no, I'm saying also, so what's the cost of running both Burr and Stratfield? So the one-time cost of $40,500, and then what's the annual running cost that we pay for Burr and Stratfield to run?
If we extrapolate and say that this 105 is half a classroom, right, because it's 18, the way it's projected here, and we've got 36 and 36, so four times the 105 is $400,000 approximately.
So it costs us $400,000 per year to keep this running, and then another $40,000 upfront?
$400,000 a year, assuming 36 capacity at two schools, so that number's going to go up again when you go to another 36. Okay, and, yep.
As a point of reference, in that same October 28th-
This is why I asked what the number is, because I just want to get clear.
And then, no, but so, Ms. Maxon-Cannelli points out that there is revenue in there of 143, so it's a net cost of $230,000. Now, if we eliminate this, oh, that's actual 16, so, okay, fine, that's actual 16, so that's not the projected.
So this is 200-
Actual 16 is, what do we have, capacity, 36 and 36? So 229 is the cost, and then if we add another section, it's going to go up to 345.
That's a running cost every year to run this.
It's a recurring cost.
This is a recurring, and this is to resolve the racial imbalance issue without any knowledge that it will actually resolve it.
No, it's not to resolve it, it's to appease the state.
Can I ask, rather than a soliloquy between two board members-
It's to appease the state, so we're paying 300, I just don't understand the numbers.
But I ask, rather than a soliloquy between two board members, if you could-
You can contribute.
If you could please make a statement, and then we'll call on a board member who wishes to speak.
Well, somebody else has the numbers, that's fine.
If I may, have you finished your commentary, Mr. Llewellyn, on your amendment? Okay, thank you.
I was in the middle of my question, that's why I never got to finish my question.
But you did not ask for recognition, Mr. Patton, followed by Mrs. Lou McCormick.
Through the chair to Dr. Tracy. It seems like amendments like this are getting bogged down into semantics, and I'm not talking about the cost semantics, I'm talking about, you know, removing Dwight a year early, when really the chart of the proposal is basically to have three sections of a open pre-K program at other schools. So my question is, does it matter to the state in how we propose this, since they know that things fluctuate from year to year? You know, we're saying this is going to be 2017-18, and for whatever, anything could happen, budget, things could happen, we could, a whole bunch of things could happen. You know, we're saying, you know, eliminate Dwight now. I'm not saying we're not going to, or we couldn't, but do we have to change it right here at this point? If we left it in, and the state approved it, and then we decided to pull it out a year early, the Dwight component, that is, does that, it doesn't matter to the state, right? So I guess my point overall is, why are we kind of arguing on semantics here unless you tell me something different?
I would only say that because there, it's only impacting one student that is impacting the imbalance ratio, I wouldn't think the state would care if we moved it one year sooner or not.
Much less if we moved it to a different school instead of Burr and Stratfield, we said, uh-oh, you know what, Stratfield can't do it after all, and we move it to, you know, I'll pick a tiny school that's like Jennings or something, or, who knows?
I'll say, our logic within the plan is that we're moving it to Stratfield because it's more likely that McKinley parents will utilize Stratfield rather than a school that's further away from them, and so I don't think they, I don't think they know where our schools are in this town.
Right.
But I think the logic that we've chosen Stratfield stays consistent with the logic we have in the plan.
I understand our logic, I'm saying, you know, is the state really, you know, going to care when you go up and present this, that, you know, a year from now, or six months from now, we go, uh-oh, we have to, you know, make some adjustments to the plan, because they always know things are in flux.
So if you're asking-
So again, we're arguing semantics about it for this amendment, but do we really need to, I guess?
If you're asking if we left it in the plan, and then decided, no, let's move it a year early, I don't think the state would, the state would just say, hey, you're trying to implement the plan earlier, that's good, so I don't think the state would object.
But you're saying you think, but in general, in terms of how the state reacts to things, Dr. Tracy?
I would not presume to imagine what the state board members would say in response to any of this, to be honest. I think we're trying to show them a good faith effort to make some progress. How I would look at it, if we adopt the amendment and reduce the number of seats available from 90 to 72 in year one, but we're still getting to 108 in the second year, over time, we're getting to the same place. So personally, I think that's fine, but I don't know how they'll react, whether they'll think that that's not quick enough, I don't know. But in two years, under the proposed amendment, as I understand it, we still arrive at 108 seats with three programs of 36 each, that we will market assertively and hope to have a positive impact.
So overall, again, I, going back and forth in my head, is this an amendment that it's worthwhile to push or support, or again, spend more time on, we've already spent a half hour on it again, but it doesn't sound like this is going to make any kind of impact on the plan, so I guess if I had a choice, I'd kind of leave it alone as is, since it's not removing, you know, one of the, you know, three big components of the plan, it's not removing one of them, or adding one of them, or something like that. It's more of a semantics thing, which I don't think the state's going to care, so I guess I'm probably not in favor of this, I just want to keep it simple.
Thank you, Mrs. Lou McCormick. I had said Mrs. Lou McCormick would be next, and then Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli.
Sorry, so I never got the final numbers. So net of the 105, it was 230 in the year one? That was the cost for running the program? That was net of the 105 savings?
No.
No.
The answer is 230. The answer is 230.
So the answer is yes, 230, and in year two, the cost would be 345?
If you extrapolate, yes.
Okay.
Okay, so that's what we're anticipating, that we're going to run-
You're just making it half again, more.
Per year, in order to possibly or possibly not resolve it, and we may end up back again with the same problem, right? Because we don't know whether people will sign up. Which brings me to the question, did we take the time to survey McKinley parents for the demand for a pre-K?
There were no surveys done in connection with this plan. There may have been some in past years, Mr. Cummings, I don't know, but there were no surveys done in connection with this particular plan. And the cost figures that were referenced a moment ago, the 230,000, is the actual cost net of the revenue for the last full year of operation of the program. That's in the materials that went out on October 28th. That's where those numbers came from.
So what concerns me is that we're doing a build-it-and-they-will-come concept, and we've built it at Dwight, and they didn't come, and so now we're going to move it to Stratfield and build it again to see if they'll come. And actually, it's a pretty captive population, and pretty small, actually, so I'm wondering why we didn't just go out to the population and ask them, if we were to build a pre-K, where would you want it, for us to attract you? Like, why are we just randomly just building, why not get feedback from the community that we're trying to actually deal with, as opposed to, I mean, did we do that, or did we not? Are we just going-
No, we did not, we did not run a survey in connection with this proposal.
So again, I would say, there's another good reason why we should go to the public, because maybe that's our opportunity to ask them, is Stratfield the place that you would want to go? Because if we come back and we hear 20 parents-
Can we please focus on the amendment?
I am, knocking on the door, then I feel like, at the end of the day, this is a good, this is a good process, that we are, we are meeting the demand, but if, if we haven't even gone through that exercise, then again, is this all premature?
Thank you. Mr. Cummings, I think you wanted to make a comment.
I just wanted to comment on Mr. Patton's comment, that one of the things that we are mindful of, we are, while this isn't a survey, is Mrs. Peruzzi in my office has been getting calls from parents about the 17-18 school year and wanting to apply for preschool, and we've held off on those application processes at this point until we had a placement for schools. So I don't have a number, I don't have a sense of what that demand actually means, but it's important to our parents that we have a decision as soon as possible about where those locations are, because it's going to impact our application process. If there's a decision not to hold the Dwight process, I've got to go through a process of surveying those parents, if they're coming back, and if they're coming back, which school, they're going to go to the front of the line, essentially. So we've got to make that happen as quickly as possible, and so in fairness to them, a decision on the school placements is important to that, to their process. Thank you.
Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli.
Two points. One, I don't regard this as an issue of semantics, this is an issue of budget. This is $105,000 savings, period, where an excellent opportunity is also then offered to the eight students who would be potentially moved. So this is not semantics, this is a budget impact, and secondly, we have also always said that any change to the racial imbalance plan must be voted on again. So this isn't something we could just decide two months from now, all right, I guess we will strip that out. We need to decide now.
Any other comments on the amendment, before I go to the public on the amendment? Seeing none, could you read the amendment, so that the public is aware of what they can comment on?
To move students who participate in the Dwight pre-K fours program in the 17-18 school year as referenced on page six.
So, any member of the public wish to come forward to speak on the amendment, and the amendment only? Thank you. State your name and address.
Suzanne Grisafa, 165 York Road. While it wasn't an official survey of McKinley parents, Dr. Tracy did come to an open meeting that all of McKinley was welcome to, and several people said, when their children were in preschool, they would not have considered Dwight or Burr, because they're working parents, they don't have time during the day to drive back and forth, whereas Stratfield is much closer to where we live.
Thank you very much. Any other member wished to comment on the amendment, and the amendment only?
Ellie Solko, 155 York Road. Just to piggyback on what Suzanne said at that same meeting, parents also wanted their children to remain in the same feeder system, which Stratfield is a part of.
Thank you. Any other member of the public wish to come forward and speak on the amendment, and the amendment only? If not, back to the board. Any other final comments on the amendment? If I may have attention, any other comments on the amendment? Seeing none, does the board all know the amendment that's on the table? If so, all in favor of the amendment as stated by the secretary, please raise your hand. Okay, it's Mrs. Lou McCormick, Mr. Patton, Ms. Carnell, Mrs. Gerber, Ms. Pitco, Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli, Mr. Llewellyn, all opposed, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Calabrese. The amendment passes seven to two. Any other conversation? I think Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli, you wanted to make a comment when we finished all amendments, so I'll give you the floor, and then we'll go to the final vote, and there are members of the public who may not have spoken on the main motion at the beginning of the meeting, and they would be, I will allow them to come forward to talk on the main motion if they've not talked on the main motion. Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli.
Mr. Llewellyn has asked if he could clarify something, so I'm deferring to Mr. Llewellyn.
Thank you. So a comment was made a second ago, that any change to this plan needs to come back before this board for approval. Is that a statement that is correct or not? So we have site TBD. Will that site come back to us for approval? Or is it, I'm looking at the pre-K, 18-19 site TBD, will that come back to this board?
I wouldn't think so, but if this board wants that statement to hold, that with the exception of an administrative wording change that doesn't change the document, that any change comes back to the board. If that's the board's wish, that's the direction it will be given.
I think it is, because everything here has significant financial impact, so when you go in and out of school, it's, you know, quarter of a million dollars, whatever the number is, something slightly less than that, and I think the point that we just heard from two parents is great, you know? There was, you know, there was input. I think if we're going to do it, we definitely want to go out and get input and find out what's going to solve our problem, rather than kick it down the can.
I made the argument, I'm asking if board members agree with those two comments, that any change of any significance comes back to the board?
Yes.
Will I have some shaking of the heads? Then the answer to your question is yes.
Thank you very much.
Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli.
And before I go into my list of comments, I'd like to ask one more time, because I'm trying to make comments on the main motion. Are there any other amendments? Because I would defer to any other amendments. Okay, so that being said, since we are back on the main motion, a couple of comments. First of all, I would-
The main motion as amended.
Main motion as amended, thank you, sir. First of all, I'd like to caution the board to, we have, every once in a while, put the word "problem" into this discussion, which I think, from all comments tonight, this isn't something that Fairfield views as a problem, so I think issue, situation, but on, to Mr. Patton's point about semantics, that would certainly be one. I don't think this should be referenced as a problem. I'd also like to make a quick comment to Ms. Carnell's point regarding cultural diversity, since she called me on the carpet for the English, being an English teacher. I actually want to point out, the whole reason we called ourselves the Cultural Diversity Task Force, although we were explicitly charged with bringing a recommendation to the board to address racial imbalance, in fact, we took the job beyond that. We did attempt to do, to organize, one Fairfield citizen worked with staff here to organize a whole cultural diversity awareness. We had an event down at Penfield, actually, certain board members here participated in that, I know Mr. Dwyer did, I don't recall if anyone else did, where we went out to various restaurants, and Fairfield brought together all sorts of different stakeholders in the town, politicians, parents, PTA involvement, and it was also a great excuse to go to a French restaurant, but, so that idea, to your point, the committee actually did go beyond that, even though it was our charge to focus on bringing a recommendation for racial imbalance, so.
When was that?
Oh, it was a little bit longer than that. I would have guessed, you know the event I'm talking about, yeah, I would have said five, I would have guessed five years ago, but I'm, it was definitely before I was on-
Right, it was bef-
We'd just got on? All right, so that'd be about five, well, so in that neighborhood, sorry.
So can we bring it back?
Great, it just, it was a lot of manpower to get it organized. So Ms. Carnell, I see a future volunteer right across the table, and that, and it was truly, all the demographics you mentioned, it was all represent, oh, and I'm sorry, it also includes students. We had several high school students representing different groups as part of this conversation, and it really was very enriching. And so, just some other points, yeah, again, sticking to the facts, it is incorrect when we hear members of the public or the board say that the preschool is not doing its job. It is moving the needle, and by coming to Stratfield, I think everything logical would suggest that this has the potential to be much more impactful than it did at Dwight. Dwight was a good idea, but like many things in education, you try something, you then adjust. It doesn't mean you throw the baby out with the bathwater. It's you make an adjustment, because you see that there is some benefit there. The program was not working at Dwight, not that it was not working at all. And so, again, we keep talking, or has kept coming up, that we could have tweaked- And so, again, we keep talking, or has kept coming up, that we could have tweaked, we should have come up with permanent solutions. I think this board has had its turn to do that. This idea of continuing to kick the can down the road, we know this is going to come up again, we're not kicking the can down the road, anything. We're trying to come up with an aggressive plan for the state that it can accept, while, and has an absolute chance of succeeding, and dropping McKinley below its 25%. I think this was a very well-thought-out plan, and I'm happy to support it, because I certainly am not looking to engage in social engineering. If somebody really wants to start redistricting, well, then I have a suggestion, why don't we talk about taking a bus from Sherman and busing them over to McKinley? That's an idea. You want to talk about a creative, permanent solution, let's take a bus from Dwight and ship them across town to McKinley. That could address the racial imbalance issue, too. After all, we've got 50 seats. So, 50 seats, that would be one bus. Take it from your neighborhood, Mrs. Lou McCormick, I know you're interested in solving this, that would be one-
The issues, not the individual members.
That would be one idea. The point is, I'm no more in favor of that than I would be of taking a bus of 23 kids for the sake of sprinkling a little diversity around this town. I think that idea is abhorrent.
Thank you. Out to the public, for any member of the public that has not spoken at the beginning of the meeting, who wishes to speak on the main motion. Anybody wish to come forward and speak at this time, who's not spoken on the main motion? Thank you. Please state your name and address.
Christine Vitale, 254 Vernon Hill Road. I thank the board for their work in looking at this issue, both this time around and in years past. I don't, as far as going to the town, I mean, I feel like the town knows that this has been an issue, it's been an issue for years. We had the town hall meeting, it's been in the paper, so I do feel we've gotten feedback on that. I would ask you to support this plan, and I fully see it as a Band-Aid, kicking the can, whatever you want to call it. I do agree with some of the speakers that we need to look at diversity as a whole in this district, and maybe we should have the conversation now about a redistricting later on. My kids are at Dwight, my kids are at Ludlow, I would like to see them go to school in a more diverse environment. I think that there are some issues that we're kind of glossing over. I appreciate the open-choice kids that my girls got to go to school with, you know, I think back, I was driving back from vacation to Cape Cod, my four-year-old looked out the window, she saw some African-American kids playing basketball, and she asked if we were in New York City. So that was a little bit of a wake-up call in terms of what her life was looking at. So when she got to elementary school, and there was just a little smidgen of racial diversity, it was a good thing. I don't like seeing kids broken down to numbers. I think you're right, I think the open-choice kids are probably going to cost more than maybe we're looking at the numbers right now, but I think that they bring value to our district and to our town and to our kids' educational experience. The mission of this board is to create global learners and to create ethical citizens. And I think that part of being an ethical citizen in this world is learning to accept people that are different from you. And that can be very hard when you grow up in a town that, in the grand scheme of things, really isn't as diverse in all areas as other parts of the world. So, thank you for your work, thank you for the cost savings that you have found. As far as the preschools and what they cost, there is, you know, a cost, there is a value that can't, a dollar amount cannot be put on. We have an achievement gap in this district we've been dealing with for years. I have to think that the earlier that you get the kids, you get them in the district, you get them in the system, maybe you're saving the cost of intervention later on. Maybe you're closing that achievement gap for all learners. And I know I'm going all over the place, because it was talked about a lot, and I have been witnessing this conversation for, you know, probably 10 years, or however long it's been discussed. So, thank you, and I ask you all to please just unite and send a unanimous vote on this, appreciating that it's not perfect, that work still needs to be done, continue the conversation with all stakeholders, so in five years, when there's space for a full redistricting, people are on board with it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else that has not spoken on the main motion and wishes to speak on the main motion, please come forward, state your name and address. And I believe you spoke on the amendment.
Only on the amendment. Suzanne Meska, 123 Rygate Road. I've been a resident of Fairfield for my entire life, which is 55 years, and Fairfield has always had a diversity, whether it was a racial diversity or a religious diversity. We've always had a situation where Black Rock Turnpike has been that, that line. And yet, somehow in this town, we have always been able to respect each other, address each other with respect, be proud of our schools, I mean, that's, that's what we're hearing again tonight, is that we have, if I was to go to every elementary school, you would find every set of parents very happy with where they are. And I think that's great, and it's a shame the state, in whatever the attempt in this intent was to do this, has now, in my opinion, made this town branch into two separate fractions, everyone looking at each other or thinking something of each other, and it's very disheartening. I mean, I, I'm going to be honest, I mean, I graduated from Roger LaLo High School, which is now Fairfield LaLo High School, you know, in fairness, we were almost 100% a white school. Has not changed much. But that doesn't mean that my acceptance of, of other people did not exist. And so, I think that my big problem with this, of course, is focused at the state, because I think they are helping to divide this town. My problem with this plan is, is more specifically that if these were all the options that we were going to be thinking of, or Dr. Title was going to be thinking of, it would have been nice, when we had redistricting meetings, to have provided all of the options on the table. Because with all due respect, going forward on this, I ask this board and future boards, if one of D, E, or F that is in this plan that was initially presented is going to be a direction, please, it is time to start making people aware of it, we have to come to an acceptance of it. I don't think it's an earth-shattering situation if everyone either moves to the left or moves to the right. I, I don't see where the problem is. I, I think it's worse when we create the situation where it's like, well, those poor people at McKinley, they, they need to have their children moved. No, we, we all are going to have to be in this together. We all have to find one common ground, and if that is that we want our school district to be more diversified, and the only way to do that is redistricting, then maybe we have to swallow it and just do it.
Thank you very much. Anybody else from the public wish to come forward and speak on the main motion, who have not spoken before on the topic? Seeing nobody come forward, back to the board for a vote. Does, is, is the board aware of the motion as amended, or do you need it restated? Everybody is aware of the motion as amended? Okay, all in favor of the motion as amended, please raise your hand. Mr. Patton, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Calabrese, Ms. Pitko, Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli, all opposed. Mrs. Lou McCormick, Ms. Carnell, Mr. Llewellyn, the motion passes six to three. Thank you very much to the public for staying for the discussion, and for the board for having it. We're on to item six, A, Ms. Munsell, the quarterly financial report. Does Dr. Tracy have any comments that you want to make on the-
No, I'll just let Ms. Munsell give you the overview, and then we'll take questions.
Doreen Munsell, Director of Finance. The first quarter report is so early in the fiscal year, but it does include the beginning of school, which, with that, we were, we added an additional 10.7 certified staff were hired. You might remember, in the budget process, we had included seven elementary teaching positions because they, we felt that they were, the projected enrollment was too close to the class size threshold, and they were either one or two students below the threshold, and with the potential to increase, or one above with the potential to collapse, but that, those positions were cut ultimately by the Board of Selectmen. Interestingly enough, of the 10.7 certified positions, eight were elementary sections. Six of the eight were anticipated in those positions that were included in the budget. The remaining 2.7 certified staff were net of staffing adjustments across the district. We had 28 teacher retirees. In addition, we had 7.3 non-certified staff that were hired, two were SE trainers, and 5.3 special ed pairs, and all of these are the results of the needs of special ed students based on, as specified in their IEPs. Also, this is the first year of the Connecticut Partnership 2.0 Plan, so our expenses are premium-based, as opposed to claims-based, as they have, have been for many years. That was a major undertaking for us to track the, the headcount and the, the different classifications of coverage, and the vendors, vendors to bill, so, and then us to scrutinize the billing, that's, that was a different, a whole new process for us. So there was an initial lag in the, in the billing process in the cycle. So what you see, and reflected in the financial statements, are expenses for July and August. The town pension contribution is not reflected in the financial statement, but it was made in early in October, as typically you'd see the, an overage in pupil personnel of 555,000, but that will ultimately be offset by excess cost reimbursement. Maintenance has many variables, which will play out over the winter with heat snow removal and other emergencies over time. And finally, we will defer as many maintenance projects as we can or practical, and any capital purchases until later in the year, where we know when our costs are more defined. So, I think that captures all the highlights of the first quarter.
Questions from the board. Mr. Llewellyn.
Ms. Munsell, can you actually walk me through your logic of your, your headcount hires? I must be doing something wrong. Is, is, are your numbers budget versus budget? Are you looking at real, actual people?
The FTE that I just spoke of? They're above the budget, budgeted FTEs?
Budget to budget.
They're actual, in addition to the budget.
So, we're down, you said that we've added sections. We're down one at Burr, we're down one at Holland Hill, we're up one at McKinley, we're down one at North Stratfield, we're down two at Osborne, we're up one at Riverfield, we're down one at Stratfield. So we're down net four sections, yet we've hired eight additional teachers. We're down 70 kids in elementary versus April of last year, and we're down 30 versus November of last year. So-
Okay, not actual to actual, budget to actual.
But we had teachers in these positions last year. So explain how we added eight staff if we had staff sitting in all these classrooms last year? Or were they vacant?
I think you might be talking about turnover versus, I'm talking about actual positions budgeted versus who we have, the, the number of FTEs we have in place now, not necessarily the same people.
Are we up 10 certified staff versus last year?
We are up 10.7 certified staff in actuality in 16, 17, above and beyond the budget.
Beyond the budget.
So we had, you, you had had how many certified staff removed from the budget versus actual?
I'm sorry? What was-
How many certified staff did we have last year at the elementary level?
Yep.
And then how many were budgeted?
That I don't have with me.
Because it sounds like we're hiring, you know, 17 or 18 people here, but our FTEs, there is an increase of staffing budgeted, so where do we end up last year? Are we up net versus last year, or are we flat to last year in actual people, actual teachers?
I believe we're up.
We're up?
Mm-hmm.
And how many are we up?
That I'd have to look up.
Because we're down four sections, and we're down 100 children versus April, or sorry, 70 versus April. So, it, it doesn't make sense that, that we're adding it, and, and the cuts. Maybe you're doing budget versus budget, I, I don't know, but it would be helpful to know where it is versus last year, as well as versus budget. Because I don't remember cutting net staff in the budget. But you're saying we're up net staff?
Yes.
So it, it might be helpful to Ms. Munsell if you sent her an email, so she knew specifically, rather than orally, get the questions, and that way she might be able to get you a memo.
No, I think I was clear here. I, can you send me the answer without me having to send you an email, or do you think you understood the question?
Okay, so, tell me again what you're looking for then.
I, I want to understand, we, where we were last year with actual FTEs at the elementary school.
Budget versus actual?
Actual employees, what the budget was.
Just elementary?
Well, that, that's what this is addressing, the 10.7 are all elementary, right?
No.
Oh, sorry, eight of, eight of them.
Right.
So eight of them are at elementary. So we, what I, what I think this is saying is that in the budget, you were down eight at elementary, and that you've had to replace, put them back in? Is that what you're saying?
I really have to ask.
It's going to be a roll forward.
I really have to ask, because I see the quizzical look on Ms. Munsell's face. If you really, I think you'll get a better answer if you can let her know exactly what the question is, just send her a quick email, shouldn't take long to compose it, and say, here's what I'm looking for.
Very good.
Thank you. Other questions that you have, Mr. Llewellyn?
Yeah, that's fine, thanks.
Mr. Tracy.
Just to, and I'll be happy to join in with Ms. Munsell, I think what, what might be helpful is if we did last year actual, this year budget, this year actual, because there was a reduction in the board's budget as it worked its way through to, to cut some number of positions, and I'm, I want to say-
Seven.
Seven. So, from act, so there was a reduction, but then in actuality, we had to, we had to add. But I think if we did last year actual, this year budget, this year actual, in three columns, I think we can be clear about it?
Yes, I think that'd be good, because we got to put the actual in there, because those seven weren't, I don't believe, they, they were added in the hypothetical world. They were added if we, so they weren't really ever in the budget, they were placeholders.
They were in the budget.
Fine, but, but they were never real employees. So, what, what it's telling me is if we cut seven fictional people who were placeholders, and we added another eight, then we're up eight.
Correct, from the budget.
Well, don't say correct to the, they were fictional people.
They, they were placeholders for classes that were supposed to have divided, if I'm not mistaken.
Because we may have had staff who were going to fill that spot, because they were coming from some other area that was being cut, so the word fictional is-
They were hypothetical, how's that better?
Well, and I think you're talking, he's talking people, and I talk positions.
I think it would be helpful to have Mr. Llewellyn's question, and then pending that, my thought is, we do actual, budget, actual, and I think you'll see what, I think you'll see what you're looking for.
Any other questions from board members on the financial quarterly report? Any other questions from board members on the quarterly financial report? Ms. Carnell, you have the last word.
Okay, I, just, I'm sorry, wait a second. Oh, okay, just under personal services, page one of two, it says, I don't have the budget book in front of me, but it says 307 other services. Can you just explain what that is? Because that's a big number.
Those are extracurricular stipends, so you have a number of, you know, extracurricular positions, you know, coaching, yearbook, you know, all those kind of stipend positions.
So we'll pay, we'll pay somebody in addition to their regular salary. I'm just going to ask one more, because Chairman Dwyer said I can get two. Under pupil personnel expense, you have 329 tuition. Again, I'm just pulling out some big numbers and trying to understand that. Again, I'm just pulling out some big numbers and trying to understand that.
Out of district special ed placement?
So it's taking, sorry, it's taking a student and outplacing them?
Correct.
So, okay, again, so we're over budget on that, is that correct?
Well, that's one of the areas that we get reimbursement through excess cost.
Do you know about how much we get reimbursed on that?
We won't know that until it's filed on December 1st.
Okay. December 1st?
Mm-hmm.
Is that like a consistent, if you place X amount of people, you get X times? You know, is it a set number by the amount of pupils?
It's, for district placed students, it's one, four and a half times per pupil personnel. And for DCF placements, it's one.
Don't get fancy on me. And I'm sorry, maybe you said this. How many students are out of place, we've placed out of the district?
That I don't know.
Oh. Don't get up.
I don't have a count.
How you get you the number, I don't know.
Don't worry about it. Okay. And then, I'm just trying to understand textbooks. You have $12,000. I think we spend way more than $12,000 on textbooks. So I'm trying to understand these numbers.
That's just special ed, pupil personnel expense, that whole category.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
If there are no other questions, if there are no other questions, we'll move on to item six B, program initiatives. Exhibit three.
And Dr. Boyce and Mr. Cummings are here to briefly overview these proposals and take your questions.
Meg Boyce, Director of Secondary Ed. I will start in the first part, and this is both secondary and elementary. And secondary in science, as you know, we're bringing a K-12 science curriculum to you this spring. And so we have anticipated the purchase of textbooks and resource materials in grades six through 12. That's an estimated cost, our best estimate at this point. The teachers have just finished the draft of the curriculum. It was, it'll be turned in to me this week. And they are looking at materials. The next generation science standards were just approved. We don't know whether we're going to be able to find all of the materials in one year, but if we were to replace all of the textbooks for all of the science courses from grade six through 12, we estimate that cost to be about $509,500. And that's the amount that you see there.
Again, Mike Cummings, Director of Elementary Ed. I want to address the social studies changes, or social studies proposal. As stated in the memo, what we're looking to do is revise the curriculum currently in grades three, five in social studies. As was mentioned earlier in public comment, the core focus of this program change will be the addition of the Assured Experiences in grades three and five with the Fairfield We want to connect those experiences to more deeply into the curriculum and make them vital learning experiences, rigorous learning experiences for the students and take advantage of the wealth of opportunities that this town does offer. So that is the work primarily in social studies. Science, we are proposing that we hold off. We are continuing, the curriculum will be done and will be presented to you as part of the 612 curriculum work. But because of the implementation of social studies next year, we want to hold off on science for one more year in three, five. Because we want to work, you know, the recurring theme in the memo, at least from the elementary perspective, is a deepening of instructional knowledge among our teachers, the instructional model. And so that's, again, the reason for working social studies this year and science next. I'll talk about the World Language Program. As mentioned in the memo, again, we, I put forward essentially two options. A lot of what drove this work and this discussion is deep desire on the part of the elementary staff, Mrs. Frankel, the World Language Curriculum Coordinator, to really move beyond a World Language Program at the elementary level that essentially covers the basics and move to a program that we would hope would, to some degree, move the needle on sixth grade, seventh grade, further expectations. What we have right now, we think is a decent program, but it really is not an immersive type of language experience that's changing students' learning and facilitation of Spanish. And it's not, at this point, having an impact on the sixth grade program. Even with the addition of third grade this year, we, we're not, we're not at a place where we really want to get to. And so where we're committed to extending the World Language Program, what we want to do in that commitment is make it a program that's really beneficial to students' learning and has the potential to impact their language progression all the way up through grade 12. So that is why, while I can offer you one option, which is to, you know, extend to grade two and move the grade two program in, the preferred option from the elementary level is to take the year, revise the curriculum as a full K-5 document, align it to the 612 expectations, and then develop for you in next fall, a proposal on how to implement Again, it's the idea of moving to a commitment or a quality issue without diminishing the expectation that we do provide this service to our students. So that is the World Language, the two options that are essentially presented there. And the final part of the memo is, again, addressing some of the work that's needed to be done at the elementary level. And that is moving to a six-day rotation. I want to notate that since the memo was given to you, the FTE change, if you look at the second line under District Improvement Plan, Specific Actions 1.14, 1.20, it says grades K-5 total cost, it would actually be now, we learned this after the memo was sent to you, it would be 0.3 FTE. So the total cost there would go up to around 21, 22,000. Because we had to make an adjustment in one of the specialist staffing. But it, as I've said before, and I can speak at length to, although given the hour, you probably don't want me to. The fundamental work at the elementary level is trying to make meaning out of our instructional practices and to make them impactful for students. And one of the things that we've recognized, or I should say, I've come to recognize in my first full year here, is that the elementary teachers are working to make better use of their instructional time with students. And there's work in the reading and language arts curriculum and the math curriculum that needs to be, the instructional units, excuse me, not the curriculum, in the instructional units that need to be done in order to make more room and appropriate room for science and social studies and World Language. So we want to be able to present a program that is comprehensive and develops students along that, to those academic expectations that 12th graders are going to be held to, are held to. But to do so in the current environment is very difficult and I think is working against the amount of work that the elementary teachers currently have on their plates.
Anything further, Dr. Boyce? Anything you want to add? If I could ask, frequently when we are improving or purchasing new textbooks, we're using money that has been budgeted for a different textbook in a prior year, we're not adding to the budget to accommodate that. When you say the 509,500, is that money that's already in this year's budget and is just being used for a different textbook next year? Or what portion of it is new versus existing?
In the current year's budget is the remaining money to purchase, the remaining social studies textbooks. We split that purchase over two years. So this would be new money, so to speak. It would be money that would be put into next year's budget if the entire amount went in. It's not currently in, there's no money currently budgeted for science textbooks.
But it sounds like there was the last half of the social studies textbooks that would not be in again next year.
That's correct.
That would be in a way a partial offset.
Yes.
Correct?
That's correct.
And how much is that second half worth on a...
It's around 250,000, roughly.
So this 510 might be cut in half?
Yes.
Just to use rough numbers?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Questions from the Board on the, on the program initiatives that are trying to be fit into next year's budget? Ms. Carnell, followed by Mrs. Lou McCormick.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand the difference, if I understood correctly, and it is a late hour, why are we pushing science off at the, I guess, at any level? And I think...
Well, at the elementary, last year with the Board's adoption of the math resource bridges, we asked for and got an extension on social studies. And at the time, I said if we're going to do that, then we're going to also have to push back science a year as well because it's, it's the ability to implement effectively that would be at stake. So we're, we're a year behind in a sense from the 612 implementation of the new social studies curriculum. We would do that in three, five next year. And then we would do science the following year in three, five, in 18, 19.
And if I, go ahead.
Are you as puzzled as I am?
If I recall, part of that pushing off was because the Board had a goal of getting a new textbook for math.
That's correct.
And the same comment was made last year that there's only so many new textbooks that our elementary school teachers can absorb and change to in one particular calendar year. And so that same logic is what you're talking about.
Yes, this is now the second year of this plan. That's right.
I'm still, forgive me, I'm still a little confused and I don't have any of the notes from last year on this. But you're saying that the Board pushed off social studies and we pushed off science two years? I may be totally misunderstanding what you're saying.
No, no, I pushed off and you agreed to have us do that. Because what I said at the time, and it's a continuing concern, is, as Mr. Dwyer just mentioned, that the adoption of the math resource last year, this year really, has made it difficult to do a good job implementing social studies. It was a, it was a financial issue as well because that was, that was a costly purchase that the Board supported. But it was, it was partly a financial issue, but it was also ability, a capacity issue for our teachers to be able to do math and learn the new math resource and then on top of that, do social studies. So we, we agreed, I proposed, and there was an agreement that we would hold off on the social studies. We didn't buy any textbooks, we didn't buy any materials. We spent our money this past year on essentially some curriculum development. Because of that, we're going to be moving social studies next year. I still have the same ongoing concern of an ability to do the job well to do science and social studies in one year. So my, my expectation is that we would do social studies next year and then science the following year.
Couldn't we flip them and do science before social studies?
We're not ready to do science for next year, no. We've put a plan in place, we've been moving to implement social studies for next year.
But we're so behind in our science curriculum. And now we're pushing it back, I think, to 2020, if I'm following you?
Oh, it would be 18, 19 for three, five.
18, 19, we're going to put it in the school or 18, 19, we're going to approve it? I'm just...
No, 18, no, the curriculum will actually be approved this year. The implementation in three, five would occur in the year 18, 19.
So that's just three, five, three to five for science?
Right.
What happens to six to 12?
Six to 12 is going forward next year.
Right. But my question is, they're going forward a year ahead of you, but won't they need the foundation to be successful in going forward? From my understanding, and when I went to school, it was probably different, but every year builds on what we've learned the year before. So if I'm following you, you're holding science off, but you're going ahead with the change in the science curriculum. Doesn't that become very disjointed to the students?
Well, I think, it would happen, it would happen this year anyway, even if we were to go forward with science, students entering a new grade are going to be going into those standards for the first time, no matter what. So, well, I understand what you're saying. My, I guess my, my concern would be trying to do this too quickly and too much at once is not going to lead to good instructional practice and good content knowledge development for our staff and therefore our students anyway. So I'd rather build the capacity and then go forward to do it right than to just do it.
I think, in all due respect, under Dr. Tidal's District Improvement Plan, it was very much keeping that thread going from elementary school to middle school to high school. But now you're saying we're going to implement a new science curriculum from middle to high school, but we're not implementing it in the elementary school? So the students are going to go from fifth to sixth grade with no change in the science curriculum in fifth, but enter a new curriculum in sixth grade? I just want to make sure I'm understanding.
That would be for one year. That's right. That would be next year.
But then again, it goes, it disagrees with the District Improvement Plan. That was a really important part of trying to make the transitions. Because a lot of people spoke about eighth to ninth grade also being a very difficult transition for the students. So I, you said the Board approved it, and I'm sure that's correct. I could tell you that I didn't. But I'm still concerned why this would be. It just, it's unconscionable that we would set up students to go to sixth grade and not prepare them. I just...
I don't, I would disagree that we're not preparing them.
Can I interrupt just for one moment?
You would disagree that we're moving students along, but we're not...
No, I would disagree with that very strongly, that we're just moving students along. I don't believe that at all.
But then how are we preparing them from fifth to sixth grade if we're getting a new science curriculum for middle and high school, but not, we're pushing it back for another year? So if we push it back for a year, do any kids miss it also? Because they're going to go into, they're going to go from elementary to high, to middle school, right?
With, Mr. Cummings, before you respond, we're getting to the witching hour, so I need to take care of that if I, that's why I'm interrupting.
No, no, go wherever you want.
How much more discussion do people anticipate on exhibit three? I think one, two people raised their hand. Is there anybody else that is expecting to have discussion on exhibit three? So, so maybe that's 10 minutes. So how about a motion that says we finish at 11:25? In order to get through the minutes and be done? You making that motion?
Yes.
Do I have a second on that motion? Ms. Carnell. All in favor of extending the board meeting to 11:25, knowing that we need six votes? Please raise your hand. Mrs. Lou McCormick, Mr. Patton, Ms. Carnell, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mrs. Maxon Caneli, Mrs., Mr. John Llewellyn, opposed?
Yeah.
Two opposed. Ms. Pitko and Mr. Calabrese, the motion passes.
Does that mean I'll have to truncate my hour long?
The motion passes seven to two. Continue, please. Did you make your comment and you're looking for a response from...
I guess I'm incredibly confused. I'm not sure. What I guess I'm trying to say is if we don't prepare them in fifth grade and then they go into sixth with a new curriculum, and I think you said it would be starting the year after, the new curriculum for elementary? So then wouldn't that person who's in fourth grade going into fifth grade be two grades behind in the, in the science?
So, Mr. Cummings, I think, please, Mrs. Maxon Caneli wants to age in this.
Just...
So if you don't mind, I'll ask her to make a comment and then come back to...
A couple of points. First of all, every time we implement a new curriculum, there is, I mean, that's always, I always remember Mr. Patton asking this almost every time, tell us about the transition piece of this. That you're moving from fifth to sixth grade, for that matter, from second to third, you're moving from what was a continuum of one curriculum to another, and that, that I believe has always been part of that summer work for the implementation guide to exactly address that. It is a matter of concern and it is something that they do each time in their summer work. The part, so if that makes sense. So this idea that you're talking about, you know, that the sixth grade would be moving ahead with a new curriculum that the fifth grade wouldn't, that is exactly what we would be paying that professional, excuse me, the, the summer development work to address exactly those concerns of a student moving from the former curriculum into the new curriculum. How do we make sure that that transition is done smoothly is exactly what they will spend summertime preparing those initial lessons to make sure that they can do that seamlessly? That it's not a jump from addition tables... That it's not a jump from addition tables to calculus, that they're prepared for that. But the part of this that I wholeheartedly endorse is the notion that I do not support the idea of teachers having to implement two brand-new textbooks in two different subject areas simultaneously. The work our elementary school teachers do is, you know, hats off to them with all of the changes that are coming down, with all the new curriculum that we are, curricula that we are approving. And so thus, what we had done out of our normal sequence was to bring that math textbook in. That wasn't coinciding with a new math curriculum. It was independent of that, because we hadn't had one. So even as we were approving a social studies curriculum, we're also bringing in a new math book. And the decision was made, let the teachers focus on becoming expert and deepening their knowledge and understanding of using that new resource, so that they were not simultaneously also having to deal with a new social studies resource. So that new social studies resource was deferred a year, so that they could focus on the Bridges textbook and math. So if we were to, next year, have them implement the social studies resource with our new social studies curriculum simultaneous with a science curriculum and textbook and resource, you are, you're setting the teachers up to not be able to do the job as well as they should be.
No, I totally agree with that. I still just don't understand how you're taking a fifth grader, sending them to middle school, and not giving them the tools in fifth grade to start to succeed in sixth grade.
Okay, so that was what Mr. Cummings was going to...
Or Dr. Boyce, one of you were starting.
On to...
What we, what the teachers have found is they have really explored the next-generation science standards, is some of the content has not shifted that much from grade to grade. What has shifted, in some cases, is how we teach science, more of an inquiry, hands-on, investigative approach. So I think there will not be, you'll find, when we present the curriculum this spring, there is not going to be a huge shift in content. There'll be some, but not a lot of shift in content between grades five and six, for example. And what we always do, as Ms. Maxon Cannelly mentioned, is we always build bridge units when we first introduce a curriculum, to help bridge either at the very end of a grade or the beginning of a grade, until we feel like the transition is in place and we no longer need to do that. So we will build that into our planning as well. But I believe, in the case of science, I'm not, I would be more concerned about another content area. I think we're going to be okay in science because of this more consistent content and the fact that students will be ready for sixth grade, we'll prepare them for it.
Are you, I just want to understand, are you talking about just for fifth to sixth, where the content is not going to be changed heavily? Or you're talking about all of middle to high school?
It varies. It varies from grade to grade and course to course. For example, you'll see that the earth science standards are tremendously different under the next-generation science standards than they are now. In some cases, the standards are, there are fewer standards, but students go into them in greater depth. So some courses will have some shifts, but not many, others will have a greater shift.
Right, well, I thought we were changing also the sequence of when certain science courses have to be, you know, the tracks are changing.
We're discussing that.
Tracks need to change. But I still, so there's nothing that we can do, except move kids along and not have them follow the new curriculum for science until they get into the middle school. And what's, I guess, the topic I'm asking is, what's the existing fifth-grade science topic, and what's the new sixth-grade science topic?
Sixth grade has not changed that much.
Can I ask that for your last question, so that I can get Ms. Lou McCormick sometime?
No, not with science, I'm sorry.
Because if we don't, then Ms. Lou McCormick won't have any time.
This is science. You know, students have to learn and go out into the world.
You have no limit to how long a board member wants to talk.
Sixth grade is still predominantly physical science.
I'm sorry, what?
Sixth grade is still predominantly physical science. I don't know what the fifth-grade curriculum is, but I can tell you the content will not shift all that much, but the greater shift will be in how the students study and learn science.
Okay. And fifth grade?
Fifth grade, I'd have to get that to you. I would say to you that, you know, much of the elementary curriculum is, as you know, is the Mill River units. Those are going to remain in place. We're continuing, they may be revised a bit to adapt to the new standards. But Dr. Boyce mentioned, and this is the idea of teaching an inquiry method. The inquiry method is really a unifying force that we see across the school district and at age level. So one of the things that we're working on this year, even though the science curriculum material won't change in fifth grade next year, we are working through the social studies curriculum implementation, as you'll see when the budget is presented, to teach our teachers an inquiry method. And that's one of the pieces we want to work on with the Frifida Museum, they have experience in teaching, working with teachers to teach them the inquiry method. One of the fundamental shifts in approach that we're working on with the elementary teachers is to no longer see those, that instructional method as limited perhaps to a single curriculum area, but as a unifying element across all their curricular areas.
A little more interchangeable.
So there's two elements, right, to teaching something. One is the instructional model, how you teach it, but there are also, particularly as you reach into the grades three, four, and five in elementary, a greater understanding of the content that you're teaching. So just like we, the district has experienced with math instruction, what has improved at the elementary level is elementary teachers' understanding of math, not just the ability to teach it or, you know, in a rote fashion, but to teach it from an inquiry method. The same thing we're expecting from science and social studies. We want to move beyond, in a sense, in social studies or science, the memorization of facts or why things happen, but we want to teach kids how to problem solve. So when you start to look at something like, you know, the phases of the moon, why that occurs, rather than just that it occurs. And that really is the work that will happen at the elementary, and we will begin it next year with the inquiry work that we're going to do through social studies.
Just a little disappointing that we're not changing it all throughout. Last question, you may not know this, has that ever been done before, where curriculums have been rolled out, but not at the same time? Okay, thanks.
Mrs. Lou McCormick.
I'm glad we're moving forward with a lot of these curriculums. The, I guess, the concern I had, and I voiced it earlier, and I, I'm not sure that we're changing the way we seem to be doing things, but, you know, for example, with language and with math, they are building topics, areas, so they build on top of each other. And I find that we're implementing it in the reverse order, which I find to be a little bit backwards. And maybe it wasn't deliberate, but I would hope that when we roll out a new type of curriculum, that we would roll it from the bottom up, because it is a building topic. I guess in science, there are disparate kind of topics, so whether you build or not, you can kind of fill in the blocks to some extent. Social studies, it depends on how you do the curriculum. You may need to know some historical facts or information or geography or whatever to build to the next one. But again, I am not feeling a deliberate plan of how you roll out. It kind of seems like, well, we'll do this one because we're ready to do it, and we haven't gotten this part ready, so we'll skip that, but we'll do this part. So I'm just hoping that, going forward, as we roll these things out, that there is a holistic plan from K through 12, and that we roll it out deliberately, to the extent we can, from the bottom up. Because then I think the rollout becomes so much smoother and so much less confusion occurs with, for the students. I know it's tough for the teachers, but even you can just reverse the order, roll it from the bottom up. And then the students get to grow with it, and the ones who didn't get the prior information don't get impacted as much, because they're rolling into old content anyways, which is consistent, and the younger ones roll into the new ones. I find it very difficult, probably, for a 10th grader to roll into a new curriculum just overnight, when they didn't have the prior to support it. And so I guess the way we roll it out kind of concerns me, and the fact that we kind of very easily seem to delay it, and when we push it forward, we're not rolling anything back. So remember, I had asked for science to be accelerated, because we were doing something else, but we said we couldn't accelerate it? We had to delay it. So it seems to be a tendency to delay, and I guess that concerns me, because we only review each area, how, how many, after how many years? Four, five, six years? And you delayed another year or two, it's like seven, soon you're going to be at a decade. I mean, I just, there's something that, to me, like, we've had all these years, and also the curriculum leaders don't all overlap. They are curriculum leaders within the area, and maybe we need to reconsider if they're so overloaded that the math can't do the science at the same time? Maybe we need to have a K through 12 science guy and a K through 12 math guy or lady. And we do it that way instead, because the fact that we can't roll out two topics at once, to me, is a little bit of a concern, and the fact that we are so disparate in our execution also shows me that, how good is that coordination between elementary and middle and high school? If you can roll out the top before you roll out the bottom? So these are kind of the concerns I have, because I feel like we're going to impact more students than not when we make these changes, even if the changes are for the good. Still, these kids have to live it, and, and they have to study and be able to perform well. And when we're making these changes that are not only, you know, kind of, I think, impactful for the teachers, but also for the students, I think that's problematic if we could just change our process to make it a little bit more efficient. And I don't know if you've put any thought to that, but I would love to hear what you think going forward.
Thank you.
Can I just respond to that? Because I want to be clear that this isn't an issue of the curriculum supervisors being overworked. That isn't the problem. The problem essentially is at the elementary level, where you've got, even where you departmentalize, which, which happens only in some of our fifth grades. You're asking a single person to become really a master of five or six different curriculum and content knowledges. And while I don't think that's an unfair request, I think it's an unfair request to say, you have to do it like this. And you have to do it executed to a level now that we have a high expectation of student learning around it. And, you know, so what I, what we have now, and it's a very similar issue in many, many districts. If somebody has an interest in social studies, they teach the heck out of social studies, and somebody has an interest in science, they teach the heck out of science. And so what you have, as students move across 11 schools and all these grades, is you're going to have pockets of knowledge. And our great task in front of us is to work to develop an equitable system of delivery so that all students coming through the system have a base understanding of what those things are. We have to address the issue of time, and how much time is given to each of those subject areas, and as most, that's one basic issue. And the other basic issue we have to address is to equip each of our teachers with the knowledge to be able to deliver the content knowledge, the content and the curriculum to the greatest potential of the students, so that they can respond to individual student needs. Given, you know, the great advantage to middle and high school is that you've got teachers of single subjects. That doesn't happen at the elementary. It's got another advantage that, that they teach all things, but you also have to address this issue. So that's essentially what I'm trying to do, and not to say no, but to do the work really well.
Thank you. Let me, let me move on. On page two, you have two options.
Yep.
The recommended option is to take a little bit more time to study the best approach to K-2, and therefore, you would prefer to put the 30,813 in the budget, not the 129. Is that my understanding?
That is correct.
Can I, because the board has had conversation on this, is the board prepared to say yes to Option 2? Any board members have any concerns on that approach? Mrs. Maxon Cannelly.
My concern only is that we have the chance to get more information on what can be discovered between now and budget time, because this isn't just a bringing in a new FTE. It is a change to how things are done, and before I approved anything like that, I would definitely want, what you've described and what we've talked about, I'm very intrigued by, but knowing that I will want more information before voting on it.
So be prepared for more conversation, just...
Try to be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On that same question, Mr. Patton.
So through the chair, Mr. Cummings, could you, I know you weren't actually there in, going through the Maryland visit, but could you maybe give us a one-minute kind of summary on your findings as to why you want this? And I guess, part two would be, just in case we're not sure where we're going, would it not be wiser to put the full 129,000 in for the grade two, 1.7 FTE? And if we decide to go one way or the other, that gives us the option? So, two questions, I guess.
Yeah, I think the first, the first part, what was described to me was, they went to two different school systems when they were in Maryland, the two different, essentially, approaches, but with the same outcomes. And what those outcomes were, they were K-5 programs, they saw a fully immersive language class at all levels, where students were kindergarten, first, second, third, fourth grade, fifth grade, were speaking in Spanish. These students had been through the program, obviously, fifth graders have been in, I think the program had been in place for about three or four years. But they were moving beyond the ability, or the simple conjugation of verbs, they were moving beyond the days of the week and the months in Spanish and the colors. They had moved into a world where they were able to engage in authentic conversation using Spanish language and idioms. That immediately impressed the curriculum coordinator, the two principals, and the elementary world language teacher who attended, you know, went to down there to see these. It was an experience that was transforming these students, in terms of thinking in dual languages. So that, that set a vision for what we'd like to pursue here.
Were those every, were those, actually, what town or county was it in?
I haven't, yeah, they were, I'd have to get it for you. One was Ellicott City?
Howard County.
Yeah, Howard County.
I know where it is.
Yeah.
And were the, was the program, as it existed, an everyday program, or was it certain days a week?
One of the programs was every day, and one of them was not. One of them was very dependent on classroom teachers, the other was using the Middlebury model of online delivery of instruction. So they're very different.
And the question as to the budget?
Oh, yes. So, yeah, we could do that. I think my concern with it is, one, it's a tight budget year, anyway, and, you know, what I'm concerned about is, if we're going to put that money in, and then we're going to wind up rewriting that curriculum, is that the best thing to do? On top of that, as mentioned elsewhere in this budget memo, I see a fundamental need, I don't, I'm not the only one to see this, that we have to really work on our reading instruction in K-2. So that's why I'm kind of protecting K-2 for a couple of years, because I want to, you know, essentially get to the end goal, that every one of our K-2 teachers is an expert in the instruction of literacy. So I'm mindful and protective of the instructional time right now, as it's mentioned in the memo, we have some work to do on our implementation guides, to, to focus those better than they currently are focused, and we've got work to do on the professional development of our teachers. So between those issues, I see the need to hold off.
Okay, thank you. So can I state for the board that we're accepting Option 2 pending a better description of it in some fashion, right? So that's your direction?
Thank you.
Can I, can I move on to the next item, so that we can get out of here in six minutes? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, you have the item 6C, the first reading.
Yes, please send me questions.
Great presentation. If there's no conversation with Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, on to item 7A, approval of the minutes. Recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting of October 18, 2016. Do I have a motion, Mrs. Gerber? A second, Ms. Pitco? Any conversation on those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. Patton, Ms. Carnell, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Calabrese, Ms. Pitco, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, opposed. Mrs. Lou McCormick abstain. Mr. Llewellyn. The next set of minutes is, recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the special meeting of October 24, 2016. Mrs. Gerber moves, Ms. Pitco seconds. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor of the recommended motion to approve these minutes of October 24, please, of the special meeting, please raise your hand. Mr. Patton, Ms. Carnell, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Calabrese, Ms. Pitco, Ms. Maxon Cannelly, all opposed? Abstain? Two abstentions. Thank you very much. Anything on superintendent's report?
Very briefly.
Please do.
Barring unforeseen circumstances, this will be my last opportunity to meet with you all as a board, and I wanted to take the opportunity to thank you for welcoming me here over the last four months and giving me the opportunity to work with a remarkable school system. I certainly appreciate your role as citizen volunteers on behalf of the cause of public education in your community, and I've really come to respect... And I've really come to respect and admire the women and men who teach your children and who lead your schools. Your kids are lucky to have them all. I also have enjoyed my brief collaboration with Dr. Jones, but from what I've seen of her, I know you're going to be in good hands when she gets here on, on December 5. And I wish you well as you continue to serve Fairfield and its children. Thank you.
Let me speak on behalf of the entire board that we are very pleased with the service that you gave us and the issues that you dealt with on a timely basis and communicated to us very well. Anybody else wish to make a comment at this time to address Dr. Tracy and say thank you for his service? You all join me in that?
Thank you very much.
You're very kind.
I'll try not to have any more unexpected developments for the next two, three weeks.
The only comment I'll make under open board comment is that Meg Brown has a copy of the calendar dates for next year, correct? So these should be considered official. And so please collect from her, it's not in front of you, it is up to the next chairman to introduce this, and I wasn't presuming, the organizational meeting. So, so please stop by her desk on the way out so that you can calendar these for yourself. Two minutes, anybody else have an open board comment that they wish to make? Seeing none, a motion to adjourn? Mr. Calabrese, Ms. Gerber, all in favor, please raise your hand.